You're watching GCTV. Community Access Table Channel 15 in Greenfield, Massachusetts.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health. Providing the care you and your family need when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank. Visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191 or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College. Providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family. The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at 772-0838 and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services. Cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com. Call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank. Located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713 or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield. Replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power, one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave. Call them at 413-772-3122 or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
Good evening and welcome to the 194th regular meeting of the Greenfield City Council on June 19th at the John Zahn Community Center. This meeting is being recorded, videotaped, and broadcast. If any other persons present are doing the same, you most notify me at this time. Recorder. Clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Zahn?
Here.
Counselor Burson?
Present.
Counselor Allison?
Present.
Counselor Pyphrom is absent at the moment. Counselor Dolan?
Present.
Counselor Gilmore is absent. Counselor Wheeler?
Here.
Counselor Mayo?
Here.
Counselor Mass?
Here.
President Renaud?
Here.
Vice President Ricketts?
Present.
Counselor Stempel?
Present. I think we skipped Counselor Dolan.
Oh, no.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. We have a quorum. I would ask you now, this is voluntary, if you would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules of procedure?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Page five. Could somebody please read the motion? Counselor Stempel.
It's my honor to read this. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves the appointment of Norman Hirschfeld to fill the vacant Precinct 9 City Council seat until December 31st, 2019 pursuant to Charter Section 2-11.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. So I just want to say, we voted on this at chairs and it passed unanimously. Former counselor, soon to be Counselor Hirschfeld, had been on the council for a long time, I don't know how many years. And he put in his name to serve again and so he did his job well and I'm sure he will again. Is there any other discussion? Counselor Mass?
President Renaud, first of all, let me say that Counselor, former Counselor Hirschfeld is eminently qualified to be my representative as a Precinct 9 resident. I'm just somewhat concerned that within a few months apart, we're following a different process. When Counselor Loebek, who resigned, his seat was filled, an ad hoc committee was created and candidates were interviewed. And another former counselor applied for that position and was not appointed. And we have the great fortune of serving with my colleague Counselor Burson, who was eminently qualified as well. But those candidates went through a very different process. And while I recognize, because I was the one who made the argument last time, that that process was not necessary, it seems inequitable to, within two months apart, to do two different processes. And I'm wondering what the reason for that is and if there's a, if there's any harm in tabling this a month so that that process can take place.
To respond to you, Counselor Mass. First, this is a shorter term and so I feel as though we wanted somebody seated quickly and to be quite honest, nobody else put in for the seat. That does not mean that Counselor Hirschfeld is not eminently qualified, but he was the only one who put in for the seat. So there was no need for a committee to decide who was going to take the seat, as we only had one person to choose from. I was loath to say that because I don't want Counselor Hirschfeld to believe that he would not have been chosen, but now that it's out there, it's out there. Any other questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Counselor Mass abstained. Motion carries. Congratulations, Counselor Hirschfeld. I don't know where you went. Oh, there you are. Welcome back. Welcome back.
Please put your right hand in the air. Say your name.
I, Norman Hirschfeld.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, perform the duties of the office, to which I have been appointed, in accordance with the ordinances, the charter of the City of Greenfield, the Constitution, and the general laws of the Commonwealth, and the Constitution of the United States.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. As long as the rules of procedure are suspended, I was just wondering if we might move up the resolution in support of keeping mental health local, since I think that a lot of the people here are to, here to address that.
I think that's a good idea. Once we get to motions, orders, and resolutions, if we could remake that motion and, or I think we can just move it around because we already made the motion to suspend the rules of procedure. So, thank you. There will be no communications from the superintendent of schools or a school committee. They were both unable to make it. Is, I don't think anybody else from the school committee is here. Is anybody else from the school committee here? No. And, but do we have a motion to approve the May 15th and May 22nd, 2019 City Council meeting minutes?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Moving on to communications from the mayor, city officers, and employees.
Thank you, Ma'am Martin.
Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
Counselors. I'll be brief. I know Director Warner has some statements he'd like to make with some new information. I want to address my comments to a couple of items on the agenda this evening. One is the RRG assessor's contract. The other is Wiley Russell Dam. I'll start with the latter first. Wiley Russell Dam, just five quick points on that when you consider deliberating and voting. The primary issue of moving with that engineering design money is safety. If you recall, about a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, we had a fire department was rescuing a gentleman, a fisherman, who got pinned beneath the dam on the, by the sluice canals. That still needs to be repaired and improved. The dam, if removed, only goes 1,200 feet upstream to another dam. That dam could cost us millions of dollars to, in the process of moving that. That wouldn't be a grant from the federal government or the state. That would cost the city to move a water and sewer line at that River Street location. Even at the Mill Street Wiley Russell Dam, we have a siphon sewer line going across the river alongside the dam, I mean alongside the bridge. The bond bill that, we have $1.25 million earmark for Wiley Russell improvements. I emphasize improvements because it doesn't say removal. There's some discussion, I heard this evening, that that bond bill earmark for improvements on the dam can be changed. I don't believe it can. You would have to start over and find another earmark. We've worked for years to work on getting money for that dam and working with, for the improvements because we're under a 10-year, 10-year order to repair the dam. And I think we're in our fifth or sixth year. Lastly, the, there is some serious issue that some other historians, you might say, will report on the dam. It has to do with the, what's behind the dam. There's the silt, there's concrete. There's some concerns about moving that dam. Removing that dam will occur, will increase the hazardous waste expansion of the silt that's behind the dam. As you recall earlier, Berkshire Gas spent several millions of dollars upstream between the two dams, cleaning up the Mead Street and the riverbed. So that's my comments on the Wiley Russell Dam and I hope you can support the continued, continued engineering to complete it. The RRG is the Assessor, Professional Assessor Services. We are bringing this back to the council for reconsideration on the $104,000. It's important to can maintain this continuity from, from June 30th to July 1st. It's just, it's only one day, but it's from one fiscal year to another. The year has to end. It doesn't, as you know, doesn't really end until July 15th. And then there's a plethora of reports and information that has to be relayed to the DOR and coordinated by the Finance Department to get us to that point. Assessor's reports are a large part of that. We want to make sure that the, the new growth and the assessed values are continued through the next year. The, the opportunity for, for any interruption during this period of time from July through September could, could affect the tax rates that go out in December. That only happens during this period of time. That will be, that will be a tough situation and you can speak to other members of the finance team as well as the assessor's office. And lastly, this RRG was hired by way of a request for proposal. That's procurement law. They signed a three-year contract. Counselor Mass is right that if you don't fund the second or third year, that doesn't mean that you have to uphold the contract. However, we still need the professional services and these are the professional services that we're looking to continue for the city of Greenfield. It's in the best interests of the city as well as all of its revenue systems. Much of their city's revenue systems come from the assessor's office.
Good evening. I just wanted to give a quick update on the department and some, some meetings that have taken place in the last month or so. Department's doing very well. We're working on approximately nine projects or, we're in the process of closing them out. Previous appropriations and all within budget, I'm happy to report. But I wanted to hit on INI just a little bit and the consent order we've been under since March of 2016. On May 16th, EPA paid us a visit. I sat with them for seven and a half hours with Mr. Hawley down at the wastewater treatment plant. We went through all the information they were looking for, which was a substantial amount. The next day, I sent them further information. We're on the radar because of the INI coming into the plant, which I think we, you've all heard about quite a lot, but we're treating wa, clean water coming into the plant and it's showing up on the other end on our discharge permit. So we're showing up on EPA's radar. They were in the area, they hit most of the plants, but like I said, they paid us a visit. So DEP came with them. De, you know, we went through the, the daily routine. They went out and looked at our pump stations, the two new ones. They were very happy about that. Not so happy about the one at Lyden Woods. So there was a follow-up meeting with DEP last Thursday, May 16th, to follow up on what may be coming within 60 days from EPA and what it means for the city. The thing that kept getting thrown out was a comprehensive plan and I think we've used the words comprehensive plan going forward when it comes to INI in our sewer system. Comprehensive plan can mean many things, but what I've been getting out of the meetings, in fact, the mayor sat in on the one last Thursday, was we've done enough studies, we've done, we've spent a lot of money on studies. We now need to move to the next phase and that's identifying. The studies have pointed out areas of town, what we call sub-basins, that we have a problem with INI coming in the system. There's 11 of them. So the next step to, to a comprehensive plan is you need to identify in those sub-basins where the groundwater is getting into our pipes. So that's going to take, you know, obviously to bring a consultant firm in and cameras and smoke testing, so on and so forth. Take a look at the pipes to find out, branch out from our main lines to find out where this water is coming from. As we all know, we've got approximately 80, 80 miles of sewer main, but probably 150 miles of pipe that, including the main that comes off the main. So, so we need to address the, the consent order. There's going to be additional information put on the consent order that we're going to need to comply with in the event that, well, we, we hope that EPA will accept the consent order through DEP as they add these other things in. So we need to, we need to go in, we need to identify the INI, evaluate it, and then we need to repair and replace and then follow up. That's basically a comprehensive plan and to sum it up in a nutshell. So I just wanted to hit on what was really important to EPA and DEP. They wanted to see my capital, they wanted to see the existing budget, they wanted to see the last couple of years of budget in the Sewer Enterprise Fund, what the five-year capital looks like. So when I presented all that, there was a comment, we had a washdown at the end of the day, and there was a comment about all the things that were on my capital, on my five-year capital. I think going through the process, I spoke right out of the gate that I put everything aside of 50 projects I saw in a five-year capital and I picked out what I felt meant the most to the city and what the city needs to do with our infrastructure going forward that means the most to the city to, excuse the expression, but keep us out of jail. So the projects that were tabled at the, at the meeting, the sewer main replacement, the sewer INI, the water meter replacement, I can speak to the water, water meter replacement, that's revenues, it's lost revenues because EPA is digging into the revenues too, looking at our increase in rates, so on and so forth. Slow meters are unaccounted for water. It's water that we're producing, we're paying for to produce that we're not seeing revenues for. So that's kind of the big one with the water meter replacement. Lyden Woods Pump Station, in January, we became, we, we now fall under some of the OSHA standards, federal OSHA standards that we haven't in the past. It's considered a confined space. The electrical in that pump station is within touching distance of working with water parts that have water in them. That's, that's in violation of OSHA. When we remove the East Greenfield Pump Station, it's called a CAN, the outside of that pump station was paper thin because it's like a submarine under the ground. They got to go down 12 feet to, to work in this thing. We suspect the same thing with, with Lyden Woods Pump Station. They were put in the same era, same time. And we laughed coming up through the process that we literally had found parts in the past on eBay to keep this thing going. We saved a few parts from the one in East Greenfield. We don't know how well they work or how long they'll last, but that, that sewer pump station is also what we call an SSO, sanitary, sewer sanitary overflow, which means if that pump, that, that plant fails, we're going to have an overflow. We have a brook right next to it, it'll run to the river. We have to pump sewage approximately a quarter mile uphill to Lyden Road if that, if that pump station fails. And like I said, we're living, we're living on borrowed time on all the parts on that pump station. So that was a concern, safety-wise with EPA and, and, and the, and the fact that it's an SSO. So I, as far as the sewer INI, 300,000 that I'd requested in, in capital, we have, in the comprehensive plan, to bring a firm in to evaluate, to get to the next step in two phases. I believe we got a cost of 500,000 for the whole city. That's camera, smoke testing, a complete build-out of what needs to be done to repair these lines. But we can do it in two phases. The first phase is going to cost approximately 285,000. I will be coming back to the council with this 300,000, if it's appropriated. I'll also be coming back to the council for 285,000 to be repurposed from the Maple Brook funds. We're going to need both those funds to get us going and, and like I said, I want to get this consent order in a place to, to keep the city safe from fines and so on and so forth. The evaluation process will give us an idea of what we're going to spend going forward. You know, everybody says millions of dollars, you read horror stories. We don't know. I, I wouldn't dare put a price on anything. We may be able to line a lot of the, the system. Lining is about a sixth of the cost of replacing pipe. So that's kind of my overview on, on, on the capital and, and where we stand with that. We're expecting a report, probably about 35 days now from EPA, but we got DEP in, in the middle, working with us and EPA.
Any questions? Counselor Mass?
Mr. Mayor, and you might be able to help with this as well, Marla or Director Warner. This is probably a relatively small issue, but it's one a constituent asked me about, so I do want to try to get the answer. A number of the trees along Federal Street and Main Street had, originally had sort of, I guess there, it's cedar along the bottom of it that, or mulch. And they are growing, starting to be overgrown with weeds as well as the median in, on Main Street. It's somewhat unattractive. We're investing so much into downtown. I don't know who is responsible historically. I know the garden club has stepped up and been involved. Can you tell us what our plan is for downtown, not even beautification, just maintenance and weeding?
Thank you for that question, Counselor. And I do apologize because of the recent, I had intended for this meeting for all counselors to receive an explanation of what the recent cuts to each department, what impact that was going to have on services, programs, or staff. And so for the, in our discussions with Director Warner, the $50,000 cut from the DPW is going to cause seven part-time seasonal workers not to be hired. And there was some cemetery and, and Marla will explain it, cemetery maintenance and some tree, tree maintenance that was included with the reduction.
Yeah, I think we changed that up a little bit. I believe it's, it's three part-time summer help. We removed some money from the actual tree planting account because we, we had the grant of two, 200 trees in the next three years. So we cut, we felt we could afford to cut $8,400 out of that account. I really had nowhere else to go as far as the budget. Right from the beginning, I had stated that I level funded all my contracted services, all my supplies, and I took a bit of a chance doing that. And of course, we fulfilled the, the union contracts, our obligations. So I didn't have many places to go. I went to the summer help because the, the next place I needed to go was full-time employees and, and we need, we need our trained labor, our equipment operators to press forward with the capital and to stay on the infrastructure as we continue to repair and continue to punch away at repairing the infrastructure.
Just a quickly follow-up. So one of the progress coming along is the replacement of the brick sidewalk on Main Street. For ADA reasons, it's a tripping hazard and it's not wearing well after a couple of 20 years. So during that process and the tearing up of the sidewalk, we'll be able to leave and leave a, a better-looking tree belt. We're picking up some green, additional green areas. So that's all in the plan. The median is really an issue that, we can't use Roundup and, so we, maybe we'll try the vinegar and water one, but the, it's, it's tough to, it's, the brick, the grass comes up between the brick and it's really hard to get it out.
Follow-up?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that. We certainly understand there are challenges within the departments, particularly with staffing, with budget cuts. I just encourage you to, and on, on behalf of myself, those people who are watching, urge people who are members of the community who want to be involved in the beautification of downtown Greenfield. I presume people can reach out to either the mayor's office or the DPW office for information on, and getting permissions to be able to go in and take that, do that work without infringing on any kind of volunteer prohibitions. Is that correct? People who want to volunteer, they can reach out to you?
Certainly, absolutely.
Counselor Dolan? And then Counselor Burson?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go back to the Wiley Dust, excuse me, Wiley Russell Dam for just a second. The claim has been made twice this evening that the silt and other material behind the dam is contaminated and presumably there's some kind of study or documentation behind that. And if so, could you send it to us, please?
Certainly. I don't have any documentation that the silt is contaminated, but it's the, the flow of the river and the fact that Berkshire Gas spent quite a few months upstream in between the two dams, River Street and Wiley Russell. So removing all that silt from upstream, about 500 feet, 600 feet, it's assumed that there, not all of it was captured and the balance might have gone down to the dam.
As part of the current appropriation, is there any kind of a study planned to see what sort of contamination does exist?
That would probably come forward with the, with the actual appropriation I'm looking for. I know it's for, for repairs of the dam. I have all the, the, the phase reports from Fosse &amp; O'Neil and I don't recall reading anything about buildup of silt behind the dam. It's, it doesn't mean it's not there. I did want to make one other quick comment from earlier. I didn't get a chance to, to get up to the mic at Ways and Means, but the next dam up, it was spoken about eventually a plan to remove the dams north of the Wiley Russell, regardless of where we land with Wiley Russell. It will cost the city considerable amount of money if we ever removed that Mill Street Dam for the simple fact is we have a sewer main and we have a water main that, right behind Enterprise is underneath the river. And if we remove that dam, the engineering study says that our pipes will be about six feet in the air. We would have to install a sewer pump station across our sewer, across the Green River to get into the interceptor if we remove the next dam up. I just wanted to clarify. The only thing that can happen there is a fish ladder, but it was spoken to earlier. It'd be an exuberant amount of money for the city to make that happen if that dam was removed.
Counselor Burson? And then Counselor Sun?
Why don't you use the jail to help pull the weeds out of the...
Certainly.
I mean, has anybody asked them? They certainly do a great job on Elm Street. Nice garden, great farm, obedient help to some degree. Fresh air. Sounds like a win-win deal to me.
Yeah. We work closely with the sheriff and the, the work crews that, that they subscribe to the city and they help a number of communities in Franklin County. We've used primarily for cleaning, storage, removing, painting. Actually, they painted the DPW building.
They also just assisted us in re-sanding the, the filter bed up at Green River. They were a great help. They were good to work with.
Okay.
Also, what goes along with the brickwork on Main Street, it's going to be a stamped concrete. It's supposed to last longer than the waxed brick. But what goes along with that is we're going to be releasing, I believe, five hydrants that are nearly 80 years old and we've had a lot of complications with them. So we're going to upgrade our fire protection down on Main Street at the same time.
Yeah.
Counselor Sun? Counselor Sun.
I know you're, um, gonna work on, um, some roads in, in town. Um, when you replace the roads, do you check for the clay pipes that are underneath them?
Yes, Counselor Sun. An example is we're getting Conway Street ready for paving. Uh, we just upgraded or checked twenty-seven water services since we got back into the field. Um, we're gonna run new main heads off Conway into West Street and Phillips so we don't have to dig new pavement if we eventually in-house run new water main on those streets. Um, and I believe a lot of the Conway Street main has been upgraded to plastic or it has been cambered as good. It can be lined. So the, the answer is yes. We try and check everything out ahead of us before we pave a road.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Wheeler.
I just wanted to address Counselor Dolan's question. Uh, there is information online about the silt buildup at Wiley Russell. Um, it does, it is in fact, uh, contaminated. Um, I don't have the statistics, but, um, I believe the report that I saw didn't consider it hazardous, but it, it, it is contaminated. And my understanding of silt buildup at a dam head is that it, um, is only a danger if released, so that it would not be going anywhere if the dam was repaired.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, any other city employees by invitation? I don't think so. No, okay. Um, so we're gonna move on to public comment. We time you and ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, and you can hear the cellphone start ringing. Um, and then if you could wrap your comments up then, I'd really appreciate it. And also, please, for the record, state your name, even if I know you, and your address. Patty Williams, you're first.
Good evening. My name is Patty Williams. I live at one forty-seven Davis Street, right next door in Greenfield. Um, I'm here to speak about the situation of the proposed removal of the mental health unit at, uh, Bay State Franklin Medical. Um, I have been a co-owner of a downtown bookstore for about sixteen years, and I've spent many hours in that bookstore downtown. And I can tell you, I mean, used bookstores are a place where everybody can come in and browse. And I have seen, um, many of our community members who are in desperate need of mental health services. All you have to do is spend some time downtown and you see that there are folks that are what I call the walking wounded. Many of these folks are veterans, many of these folks are young, and they need services locally. It does us no good to have to, how are we gonna send people outside of Greenfield to get services when folks can barely handle their day-to-day needs? Um, everyone here knows that we've had a serious opioid epidemic in this area. Um, clearly Franklin Medical has been a place where people have gone for help. Uh, and I know there have been cases when folks have had to detox in the mental health unit of Franklin Medical. So I strongly urge this council to take into consideration all of the folks who are in Greenfield. And please, please pass a resolution recommending that Bay State Franklin Medical do not close the mental health unit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Susan Worgaftik.
Good evening. My name is Susan Worgaftik. Okay, okay. My name is Susan Worgaftik. I live at forty-five Forest Avenue here in Greenfield. Um, I'm also here to speak about the mental health unit. Uh, we are, there, right now, there's the possibility of a new mental health hospital coming into Holyoke, and that's wonderful. We need the services. There is no question that we do not have enough inpatient mental health services now. The idea of closing the unit that we have only means that we're back to decreasing mental health services. I don't understand the concept. We need those services here. We need them for emergencies. I'm a former social worker. Uh, emergencies don't happen between nine and five. They don't happen because someone needs them sometime. They happen because they're needed now. And that's when people come to the mental health unit. And the idea that someone would have to travel forty-five minutes, many of our folks here, as you know, don't have cars, or if they have cars, they're not necessarily reliable. So the idea of having to find transportation, get down to Holyoke, does not make sense in terms of the needs of the citizens of this community. And I hope very much that you will, put, will support the resolution to keep that mental health unit here. I think it's vital for the overall support of the community. And also, even though they're not your, your constituents, people from the hill towns who come here, they don't need an extra forty-five minutes on top of the forty-five minutes to get to Holyoke in order to be able to, to be able to serve their family. A person in crisis is a person in crisis, and we need to recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Irene Woods.
Hi, my name is Irene Woods. I live at twenty-seven Cook Street, and I'm here tonight as, um, a representative of Mayor Martin's Domestic Violence Task Force.
Hello, I'm Mary Coachella. I'm, I'm chair of the Domestic Violence Task Force, and I'm also here with Scott Smith, and Otis is also, um, on the task force as well. The reason we're here tonight is we wanna let you know that we're, we're doing a social norms campaign to try to, um, survey citizens in Greenfield around the issue of domestic violence. And for those of you who might not know, Social Norms Campaign is based on the idea that people tend to do what they think their peers or the, the majority of others, um, are doing. So like, if you've seen the billboards for teens that say, I think it said something like eighty-seven percent of kids eat dinner with their family three nights a week. That's, that's the same kind of campaign. So we have a very short survey. It only takes two to three minutes to fill out. Um, and it's gonna be, uh, between now and the end of September, and, uh, it's for Greenfield residents only to determine, do Greenfield residents know how to define domestic violence? And, and if yes, would they be willing to get help for somebody if they saw it was happening? And do they know where to get help if they saw it was happening? So just happened to have the survey with me, and, um, there's several, they're gonna be located all throughout, um, Greenfield in different locations. Um, but we also, on the flyer that we have, there's a QR code and it brings you a link right to the, um, webs, the mayor's task force website on the town of Greenfield's website. So we're actually hoping that the council might take a moment out of your time to complete the survey, um, at some point this evening. So if, if I could leave
Sure.
this with you and also some of the hard copies of the survey, and then perhaps you could pass them on to, to Counselor Wheeler if, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, councilors. I'm Bob Williford, ninety-seven Homestead Avenue. Tonight, you're gonna be asked to approve funding for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to study how to repair the Wiley Russell Dam on the Green River. I sent you all a email back in May asking that you reconsider that idea. Ask yourself what function of the dam is being repaired? How's it not performing adequately? It's hard to answer that question since this has been a pretend dam with no real purpose for years. I sent you an article from five years ago that celebrated the downgrading of the Wiley Russell Dam from high hazard to low hazard, so it could be repaired instead of being torn down. And then it wasn't repaired. The priorities for state funding of dam repair go to the high hazard dams. So Greenfield, which has a dam that is a useless placeholder for a series of historic dams, maybe, that were used to power industry, will rightfully be at the end of the queue to receive funding. If Greenfield had some flooding issue that couldn't get state-funded because some other town was getting money for what was essentially a museum project to recreate a historic relic that hasn't been more than a fake dam for decades, we'd be peeved. Yes, there will be costs to demolish the dam, particularly because of environmental issues. But I'm guessing the cost will be less than the one point two million I've heard for repairing the dam. And no future council will ever be asked for money for periodic dam inspections or more repairs because the dam would be gone. I don't know where you'd put it because the town no longer owns land on either side of the dam, but you could put up a nice sign that memorializes the dozens of historic industrial buildings for which not a brick stands on the site today. And the sign could say, "And there was a cool dam, too. We decided not to spend more than a million dollars to keep it either. You're welcome." Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Tog.
Hi, my name is Tom Tog. I live at twelve Walnut Street here in Greenfield. About thirty years ago, we had a, a mental health crisis in our family. Our, our son had a, had a breakdown. And at first, we didn't know what to do about it. And luckily, a friend of ours said, "Well, there's Eastpoke," which is the mental health unit. And at that time, I don't think we knew about Eastpoke, and we called and we were able to get our son into Eastpoke. And it took two or three years between Eastpoke and other facilities for him to finally be in a situation where he's now leading a fairly normal life. I sort of wonder what would've happened if Eastpoke didn't exist. To us, it was a godsend. Uh, we weren't quite sure what was gonna happen to him or to us if there wasn't some kind of a place that could do intervention for him and for us. And his friends were able to support him and all because Eastpoke was local, Greenfield, where we live, not in Holyoke, which is miles and miles away. Transportation and everything else to Holyoke would be very difficult. And we, we just don't quite understand why, uh, Bay State Medical is, is thinking of withdrawing Eastpoke from our locality. It makes sense to me that we need more mental health facilities, like the previous speaker noted, but not take away mental health, uh, but, but advance it. There's a lot of things going on, particularly the opioid crisis. And so it would be great if, uh, this council could use its influence and, and pass the resolution asking that we keep Eastpoke here in Greenfield. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sue Louizagou.
My name is Sue Louizenow. Not bad. That's pretty good. Lasagna, Louisiana, whatever. Um, and I live at four oh one Countryside in Greenfield. And, uh, I did put an opinion piece in the paper about ten days ago, not realizing this was coming up. I think it was June tenth. But I'm a former, was the first director of special education for Mohawk, so I'm old. And I go back to when we had state hospitals. And I've been on the, uh, worked for the Bureau of Institutional Schools for Massachusetts. I've been on the National Alliance on Mental Illness State Board for a number of years in Massachusetts. We do have a loved one that has a behavioral disorder, and currently I'm on the VIBR Human Rights Board, and that's the only long-term, the only long-term psychiatric hospital in all of western Massachusetts. And right now, we don't have a home. And, um, we may end up having, because so many hospitals are privately for-profit, we may end up having to put what should stay in western Massachusetts in another part of the state. So kind of a similar problem. What's the concern? How are the professionals gonna meet with people? How are families and friends? And this is in Springfield. And you know, how are they going to be able to communicate? How are they gonna be able to coordinate services? Before de-institutionalization, there were about six hundred and fifty thousand state hospital beds in the United States. Now, with double the population, we've got about thirty-five thousand state hospital beds. I mean, anybody that's as old as I am, and maybe not even quite as old as I am, has seen the change since those hospitals closed. The promise was services in the community. And seriously, that was the whole promise, services in the community. What are we talking about? The only acute care service in terms of treatment they wanna take away. That's it. Where do they go? Where are the police gonna take them? Where are they gonna go? A third of your prisons and jails, mental health. It's a no-brainer. I don't know how you can fight this, but this is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Regery.
Thank you, Madam President. Hello, councilors. My name is Joseph Regery, six forty-three Bernison Road. I'm here tonight to advocate for the assessors' office. Um, and I'd like you to reconsider the funding of the hundred and four thousand dollars. I sit here and I hear all of the expenses of the DPW and the dam, and I think to myself, how are we gonna find funds for this? Well, the office of the assessors accurately and consistently values properties, finds new growth, uh, follows up on permits, and really is our main revenue source for the town of Greenfield. So to cut that office does not seem very logical to me. Uh, I'm confident we have a system in place, oh, excuse me, I'm, I'm the chairperson of the Board of Assessors. I'm confident that we have a system in place right now, working with our new chief assessor, Kimberly Mu, and, uh, one of our new, uh, board members is Deanne Leterno, and we're working really well with RRG. I understand there's conversations of hiring it in-house and all those other things, and we're open to that conversation. But right now, we need to continue what we're doing, and we need to keep this revenue source taxes, uh, coming in. And I really urge you to consider that. Uh, just going back, I did, we did a little research, uh, fiscal year twenty seventeen. I think we were budgeted one hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred. Fiscal eighteen, one fifty-seven and change. Fiscal nineteen, uh, one sixty-two and change. Uh, and now we are looking to spend seventy-seven thousand. I don't know any, uh, town department that could cut, uh, that percentage and be successful. So I understand you've got a lot of, um, people asking you for this, that, and everything else. I just really encourage you to consider, uh, funding this for our assessors' office. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joe Pacilia. John Pacilia. Sorry, John, that was Joe. Pacilia.
I don't want to confuse you. We're speaking on the same subject, so we'll come up together. Let's speak. At the same time. I am John Pacilia.
Pacilia.
Chairman of the Greenfield Historical Commission, and, um, this is my colleague, Terry Ruggles, and we're here to speak about the Wiley Russell Dam. Um, let me give you a little bit of background for those who missed it about the, just the historical context. So there's been a dam on that site since sixteen ninety-nine. The current dam was built in eighteen thirty-six. Um, it was formerly known as Bascom's Dam, and, um, it's inventoried in the National Historic Register. It's inventoried National Park Service and, uh, Department of Interior for its considerable, um, historical, um, value. The dam itself, physically, is what's, it's actually a hybrid dam. So it's a timber crib dam made out of timbers, but it's also a hybrid because of the way it's constructed. So it's very rare. It's a, it's in what's considered to be like one percent of the dams left in like New England at least. Um, so, super rare. So super rare, as dams go, if you care about that. But beyond that, the dam represents the most important piece of Greenfield's industrial history, hands down. It's the dam that ran the factories for the Russell cutlery. It's the dam that ran the factories for the Greenfield tap-and-dye, for our fathers, our grandfathers, and great-grandfathers. People immigrated by 1840. Wiley &amp; Russell had offices in New York City and Manhattan where they were meeting immigrants from Germany and Sheffield, England, specifically to train them in the high, in the highly-skilled machine and tool industry, of which this is like the cornerstone. I could go on and on, obviously. There's no doubt that the dam is of immeasurable historic importance. But what you all really care about is should we save it or not. It's been sort of a football for a bunch of years. And I've got a big fat folder, which I was waving around before. I've been involved with the dam project for over 10 years. But I've got records that go back 45 years of inspections and inspections and inspections. Needs a little repair to the abutment, they said, in '73, or in '76, or in '90-something. And it was just pushed down the road. And then at some point, the dam went from being a low-hazard dam, meaning that if the dam blew out, which it hadn't done, and still has not done, right? In almost 170 years, this dam has never blown out. Even if it did, it would not even cause any life-or-lim issue, right? Wouldn't flood anything out. But somehow, miraculously, the dam was reclassified as a high hazard to substantiate the removal of the dam and the restorative process to restore it back to some pre-human state. Well, of course, we found out that we were not able to do that, that removing the dam would only open up 1,100 feet of river, and that this was sort of a dead issue. But we were now stuck with a dam that was rated as a high hazard, and we had to do something. All right? Then after the dam was re-engineered. It was re-engine-
I'll give you, John, I'll give you both time together in six minutes. So you get three more minutes. But Terry, if John takes it all up, that's on him.
So it was reevaluated and was reduced back to a low-hazard rating, which it had been for decades and decades and decades. And that's where it's at now. The dam itself is actually in good condition because the dam has been reinforced with concrete, tons and tons of concrete behind it. And it's really the abutments where it meets the sides of the river that need to be repaired. Either way, you're going to have to repair them. And the sooner we do it, the less money it's going to cost.
Terry Ruggles, Nine Long Avenue, Greenfield. I want to quote from a couple of letters that came in when we were just getting really busy on this dam. And the first one is from Joseph Peter Spang, curator emeritus of Historic Deerfield, member of the following boards, Pecumtuck Valley Memorial Association, Historic Deerfield, and the Massachusetts Historical Society in Boston. I'm only going to quote a couple of lines. "The water power created by this dam was essential in establishing the early and historic industries in this immediate area. Later, the dam was the setting for the early buildings of the first tap-and-dye corporation in America. It is an almost unique tangible asset of our industrial heritage. The dam has survived for centuries in good order despite floods, hurricanes, et cetera. In my opinion, this proposed demolition is completely unnecessary. It must be preserved." And this letter from Timothy Newman, who is head of the Pecumtuck Valley Memorial Association, particularly interested in instructing kids about history and has worked with the Greenfield school system off and on for years. "Children need concrete, three-dimensional historic relics from which to build their own historical understanding. Conversely, taking a group of schoolchildren to look at a spot on the Green River where, quote, 'there used to be a specially-built dam,' doesn't cut it with kids. You've got to show them the shape of the dam and what happened, and how it powered plants on both sides of the road, and how the things that were invented there, i.e. taps and dyes, ended up on the moon. Ended up with 4,200 employees that helped defeat Hitler during the Second World War because we had the material to repair Jeeps and tanks and that type of thing from this town. You must save this dam, period."
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll leave it at that.
Amy Heisen.
Hi, I'm Amy Heisen. I'm, I live at 155 Wells Street. I want to thank you all for being here and for your willingness to open up for some discussion about the potential closing of the Eastpoke here in Greenfield. As a woman who is on the forefront of the recovery movement here, I want to say that this would be a grave mistake for our town. There are so many people who rely on the services here at Franklin, Bay State Franklin Medical Center in order to meet their mental health needs. With co-occurring disorders at the rate that they're at, if we were to lose that service, it would really be detrimental to the recovery of our community. So I don't really have a lot to say that other people haven't already said. I think that you all know how important it is, and I just want to appreciate that you're all willing to listen. And I want to encourage you to, as a council, to do whatever it is that you can to make sure that we keep the services that we need here in Greenfield. So thank you, and thank you for your work.
Thank you. Betty Teagle?
Good evening. I'm Betty Teagle. I'm well-known disability advocate. I was a previous ADA commissioner of Greenfield. I actually taught in the Greenfield Public School and special ed. I recently received the ADA Leadership Award in Montague and finished our ADA Transition Plan. I have a history of advocating for students, for individuals in our community. And I appeal to you to keep the mental health services in Greenfield. I can't perceive the difficulty, somebody coming from Charlemont to go all the way to Holyoke in the middle of winter to receive services. We have other Hilltown families that need these services. And they have limited transportation. They have limited family members here to help them. And I really worry, what will happen to the clientele that's already receiving services here when they don't have the transportation? These mental health citizens of ours need immediate care. The PT-1 Mass Health Transportation System, you have to schedule it a week out if you're going to go to Holyoke. And these are crises that happen today, tomorrow, overnight, in the middle of the day. And we really have to seek each and every one of your support to keep the services here. Furthermore, they want to close the services in Westfield and consolidate all the services in Holyoke. We really need each and every one of you, and it has demonstrated in our community, the real need to keep these services. And I thank each and every one of you to understand the complete picture here. And I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Stern?
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. And I'm a registered nurse at Bay State Franklin Medical Center, 164 High Street, on the mental, in the mental health unit. And I live at 12 East Street in Hadley. So I thank all of you for letting me come from away to speak tonight. So I think you can all guess why I'm here. I'm here to strongly urge you to vote for this resolution to keep the mental health unit open. I've been a psychiatric nurse for 14 years on the mental health unit. I've also was a social worker for years. And I've dedicated my life to working with people living with mental illness and dual diagnosis, so addiction. And I think the first thing we need to hear is that this is not an expansion of services. So despite Bay State saying that this is a 30% increase, there is no expansion going on in Franklin County. This is an absolute loss of services. So that's the first thing. The second thing is it's going backwards. Talking about centralization of services, all in one town of Holyoke. The only thing Bay State's going to keep open is their mothership's unit. So Bay State Franklin's mental health unit, the Fowler unit in Westfield, and the two units at Palmer, they're all slated to close. And this is not about money. Well, actually, it is about money. Bay State has more money than God. So this is not about their ability to renovate or make the unit what it could be. This is about washing their hands clean of a service that doesn't make money. And they're going to be a 33% shareholder in this new hospital for-profit. Health Vest is going to be the primary owner. And the only thing that Bay State's going to provide are physician services. Other than that, they're going to have nothing more to do with the running of mental health services. So I think it's important for people to realize this, though Bay State is acting like they're all involved, really, they're stepping away. This is a stepping away from a service that they have not wanted to do for a long time. They say, well, this is going to serve western Mass. This is going to help people in western Mass. This is a for-profit hospital. So the people who are going to get served first are the people with the right health insurance. That's people with private health insurance. Those are the people that are going to get served first. And they're going to come from wherever they're going to come from, not necessarily Greenfield and not necessarily western Mass. We keep people, we take people, because we're nonprofit, we take people who have no health insurance, horrible health insurance, can pay, not pay. And we will keep people for weeks and weeks and weeks because there isn't enough safe services in the community. Boy, that went fast. So in closing, I hope that you do the right thing and send a message to Bay State that this is still our hospital. Thank you.
Thank you. So whoever else wants to come and speak may come up now. Because you didn't sign up, we call this the lightning round, and we give you two minutes to speak on the lightning round. But if you would still state your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Thank you. My name's Alex Harrow. I live at 72 Hastings Street. I hadn't intended to speak to the full council tonight because we actually had a very good discussion with the Ways and Means Committee earlier this evening. I represent one of the members of the partners who advocate for removal of the Wiley &amp; Russell Dam. The issues that we discussed are complex. Some of the facts are not clear yet. I will say that some of the issues that have been raised by the mayor this evening and members of the Historical Commission, all can be dealt with with respect to a removal option. We understand that. We realize that. We wouldn't be back at the table here if we didn't think we could accommodate them. So we did, as I said, have a good conversation with the Ways and Means Committee. We discussed some options for the vote tonight in terms of what to do, maybe put things off for a while till we can get the facts straight. I would hope that members of the Ways and Means Committees would bring those discussions up in their deliberations this evening before you take a vote, because I think we're making some offers that I think are very good compromise towards this whole problem. So thank you for your time and attention if you have any questions. And I did send everyone a letter here earlier last week. I'm hoping you all read them. I'm sure that you did. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Thank you for adding me to this list. I came in late. I was, came from another meeting. Carol Letson, 29 Allen Street. And I wanted to speak for the family members, for the family members who want to visit their family member who is going to be in Eastpoke, who needs those health services, who would like to visit on a regular basis. It's going to be very hard if a patient, a child, a family member is in Holyoke. How are those family members going to come from Heath or some, or Charlemont, et cetera, and get to Holyoke to visit their family member? I've spoken to several parents who said, "What will happen if my son has to have some time with behavioral supervision, and I can't visit him every day? Like I have when it's been at Franklin Medical? It's going to be a very different picture once that child is in Holyoke." So I just wanted to talk about that perspective. I hadn't heard that yet this evening. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Janet Tog, and I live at 12 Walnut Street. I- Oh, microphone. I haven't used one in ages. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Janet Tog, and I live at 12 Walnut Street. And I know my husband spoke, but I need to add a little bit more to that. One thing is that because our son went through so much, and we used Eastpoke, it just happens that I know a lot of young men in town who have mental issues because they're friends of my son. And they're in the community, and they're doing well. But sometimes, they don't do so well. And I know several, they will walk themselves, walk to the hospital and ask, "Can I stay at Eastpoke overnight, or can I get in?" They're never going to walk to Holyoke. And they just start deteriorating. And it's not good for the community. They're on the street. They live here. That's one thing. The other thing, sometimes people go in and they're mentally ill, and they get in and they find out they have physical problems, which have nothing to do with mental illness. And if they're in a hospital, they can be treated in other parts of the hospital, which says they don't need to be in Eastpoke. But if they're not in a facility where they have those medical issues to be taken care of, it's really detrimental to the patient. So that's one thing. And I could go on and on about the value of having Eastpoke in town. I mean, we had situations where the police had to come, take our kid. Are they going to take him all the way to Holyoke? And also, you take your child or whatever to Holyoke, and then you have to go home. So you can't stay overnight in Holyoke. You know, the parents are really put out. You know, they drop off their kid, they have to go home. Or the same is visiting your kid, which sometimes is helpful for the parents to work with the hospital in talking about their child. If they get down there, maybe they aren't accepted. Where do you take them then? I mean, it's just ridiculous to think that they're going to take Eastpoke away from Greenfield. We have a lot of mentally ill people in Greenfield, unfortunately. But they need, they need that support, that facility. And so I go on and on, but I won't. Okay? Thank you.
Hi. My name is Ben Towesley. I live at 9 Frederick Road here in Greenfield. I'm a hospice chaplain. I have been for the last 16 years out of Cooley Dickinson. We very much value life, whether it is beginning or ending, or in great danger. I worked in a state mental hospital in New Jersey in the '70s, and I witnessed the great injustice of how mental patients were treated, both in being hospitalized as well as after they're being released. And others have alluded to the lack of services. This is a moral question, and it has to do with a legacy of injustice. I want to urge you to consider the great stigma that mental patients have carried for many, many years. The reason that we have a fire department in this town is because we value life. Likewise, the police, likewise, other vital services. This is a vital service. And I hope that we all agree that life is precious regardless of who that may be. So I urge the council, as well as the mayor, to use your voice and to stand up for this just cause. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Sarah Ahern, 160A Hawk Hill Road, Shelburne Falls. I'm here to, one, thank you for bringing forth a resolution to keep the mental health unit in our community. in our community. I'm speaking to you today as a former American Foundation for Suicide Prevention Legislative Ambassador and a current field advocate. And what I see the issue here is, and I have lived experience, and that's really hard to say in public. But what I see happening is the privatization of healthcare is taking away vital services in our community. The hospital is gutting specialists, and this is just, you know, marching forward towards making more of a profit. And the reality is, if a loved one is in crisis and that mental health unit is gone, and they have been Section 12, which is chorus treatment, they're going to be sitting in our ER, probably for three to five days. I wouldn't want my loved one sitting in an ER in a mental health crisis, eating water and crackers, pretty much. So I hope that the resolution passes. I'm not sure what kind of jurisdiction that this body has to make a private hospital change their mind. But I hope that the public pressure will convince them to change their mind. So thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Councilor Wheeler, moving on to public hearings and second readings.
Greenfield City Council, second reading, June 19, 2019. Appropriate $276,530 from free cash to the following FY '20 operating budget accounts. Assessors' expenses, $104,000. Health insurance, $144,000. Workers' compensation, $28,530.
So there, I'm going to open up the public hearing right now on those matters. It's 8:20? I don't think, is there anybody who wants to speak on those financial matters? I didn't think so. Councilor Wheeler had earlier requested that we already had voted to change, suspend the rules or procedures. So in seeing since most of you are here for the resolution to keep mental health services local, we're going to move on right to that resolution. Chair of Appointments and Ordinances is not here. So could somebody else do the reading? Vice President Ricketts, it's page 87.
Okay. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves the attached resolution entitled, "A Resolution to Urge Bay State Health to Preserve Their Acute Inpatient Mental Health Unit at Bay State Franklin Medical Center" as submitted by President Cameron Renault.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. I want to, at this point, disclose that on my part, there may be an appearance of a conflict of interest. So I have filed the requisite forms with the state. And because I do, it was, I know I want to be sensitive to it. I do work for the Massachusetts Nurses Association, and we do have nurses on that unit. It is not an actual conflict of interest because I have no financial gain or loss as to whether or not the unit closes. But I am filing the form, and I wanted to disclose that fact. So is there any discussion? Councilor Burson.
About this. First of all, I think we have failed to call the hospital officials before this council in connection with what they're doing. For my part, I would want the president of the hospital here. I would want the president of the system here. And I'd like an economic justification for why they're doing this. I think the resolution, which I support, even if it passes, will be relegated to the dustbin of all resolutions. So passing resolutions of the heart are important. But what the people of Greenfield and the people of the county, I think, want is the retention of the services. First of all, this is a wave of private enterprise financed essentially by hedge funds in order to privatize healthcare. And when they do it, what they do is they take the nonprofit piece out of the system, and they put it in a sidecar as a private enterprise. When they do that, they accomplish many things. One of the things that they do is bust the union. Because they don't, they don't have to deal with the entire institution. They slice it and dice it into a separate part. Now, there may be perfectly acceptable financial reasons to do this, for consolidation. And consolidation is nothing new to healthcare or any other industry, or a bank, or any other business that has to operate in this environment. But there's nothing before us in connection with the rationale why. You know, I implore all the folks that come here and say, you know, keep it here. I understand why you want to, you want to keep it, keep it here, right? There are probably some people in Providence who probably would like to have the Pausok stay in Rhode Island. But that's not, that's not the way it works. Now, I haven't heard from the police department. I'd like some testimony from the chief of police of this, of this city, as well as all the other, other towns in this county, as what this is going to mean practically to the police department in connection with dealing with mental illness and mental, mental health problems in the community. There's nothing, nothing here on the record that says, says that that is not in the best interest of comprehensive law enforcement within, within the county. So I, I would like to table this. And I would like to call, at least invite, the establishment of the hospital to come before us and justify whether, and tell us why they are losing money in connection, connection with this. I also would like to hear the hue and cry of basically the leadership of all the towns, Sunderland and Deerfield and Warwick, all the towns to come in, come before us and say to us, this is not only bad for Greenfield, it's also bad for Franklin County, it's bad for Buckland, it's bad for Heath. Where are these people? Where do we build, where do we build a record? Now, if they don't show up, remember that thing I put in the charter? It's called a subpoena. And I'd subpoena these people in here to testify and justify why they're taking these kinds of basic human services out of here and shipping it to Holyoke. I know why they're shipping it to Holyoke. Because they've got a building called the Holyoke Geriatric Center that's abandoned. And what they're doing is they're taking private money, and they're putting, and they're putting it in, in there. And basically, that's a trend I don't like, but it's a great way to rehab old buildings. That's for sure. It's not the only place they're doing it. So I think we don't, we don't have a record. And I don't know why you folks are not in front of the hospital complaining with a, with a picket sign, saying, this is not right. This is, this is not right. You could talk to us all day and all night, and we'll pass a resolution, and, okay, and we'll pass a resolution. It amounts to no more than pledging allegiance to the flag. It doesn't really connect with where, where they are. So I suggest, respectfully, but not without passion, that we get the people who are making the decisions, idiot. We have on the Bay State Board, the central board, we have representatives. And I think Tim Farrell was somebody who was, who was on there. And I'd like to know, from Tim Farrell, you know, when they came before you to do this, because this is a few dollars.
I don't think he's on there anymore, but we should find.
What was the justification for doing this? And if there's no justification, then I think that we really ought to mobilize and make this the kind of issue and attention it deserves. Now, we spent more time on the Wiley Dam than we did on this. Now, you know, I have nothing against the Wiley Dam, but come on. This is, this is really, really important to folks. And I'm, I'm not satisfied with, with, with what we're doing. A resolution doesn't, doesn't cut it.
Thank you, Councilor Burson. Councilor Masse.
In so many ways, I couldn't agree more with Councilor Burson. That while I think this resolution is well-intentioned, I think it is, has, I won't say it has no effect, but has very, very little effect. And I think more meaningful effect comes from the opportunity to have representatives of the hospital here answering questions and providing their perspective. Now, I've heard, you know, I can imagine lots of reasons why this might be a positive move in some ways. And I can imagine in many ways, answers to a lot of the concerns that people have. But I don't know them because none of them have been presented to me. The best presentations on the position of the hospital came from Ms. Sterns, who said, these are not, this isn't what happened, happening. Because she's answering, I think, what has been articulated by the hospital and other venues. But I haven't heard those things. And I would like to hear what they have and like to ask the simple follow-up questions to that. The number one concern I have is for quality of care for mental health patients. Frankly, I don't care about the nurses. They can go get a job somewhere else. I care about quality of care. And I don't care, I, I understand there are some advantages for having care here locally. But having the best quality care is the most, is the most important outcome. I also think that this is not, frankly, in many ways, while we have a community relations and education component, it is not our role to tell private businesses, for-profit or nonprofit, how to conduct their business. If this was a resolution about asking the state legislature or the governor to appropriate more state funds for mental health, I could vote for that. If this could be about the state reinvesting in mental health services instead of leaving it all, or nine, over 90% of it, to nonprofits and private entities, I could get behind that. But with the exception of the fact that they receive tax-exempt status for their property, we have very little authority, other than moral authority and speaking. We can speak on behalf of the community. But that has very, very little effect. What has effect is dialogue, conversation, and regulation. That's what we can do. We discussed at appointments and ordinances, bringing in and sending invitations. And I'm sure that those invitations went out from the clerk's office. But I think we need to re-invite. I think we need to insist on, on representation coming forward. I think tonight should not be the end of this conversation. And I, my fear is, if we pass a resolution, this will be the end of the conversation. I'd like to have a continued dialogue in the community, and it to be the first step. So I can ask those simple questions of, what is the effect going to be of the hos, the new hospital entity, whatever it is, sectioning a client? They're no longer going to come before the Franklin County Courthouse and get, receive justice in the community which they live. They're going to go to whichever community the hospital's in. Is that, is that, how are we going to effectuate that? Are people who report to the hospital, are they going to sit in an ER for five days? Or are we going to be transporting them by ambulance to, to a Holyoke? Does this, is this going to be a change where Cooley Dickinson Hospital is going to start picking up mental health patients because they're unwilling to go to Greenfield? And they're unwilling to wait at an ER, and they're not willing to go all the way to Holyoke? There's a lot of ramifications for this that I just don't know. And I don't, I honestly don't think that the hospital is probably thought all the way through either. And I think we can help them with that conversation, and we should not end the dialogue tonight. I would concur with Councilor Burson that this is something that should be tabled. And I don't mind the committee of the whole, rather than sending it to appointments and ordinances. I think it's important enough for all of us to be involved. And we could bring, ask the representatives of the hospital, and I have no problem with the representatives of the Nursing Association, Nurses Association also, coming before us and giving their perspectives, as well as representatives of patient associations.
Thank you, Councilor Masse. I wanted to speak just to put some more information out there on the table. So our state delegation has written a letter to Bay State executives expressing their concern over this. And they do have a meeting with Bay State executives July. I can't remember the date. But perhaps that's something that members of the council could be invited to as well. And, and I will ask the organizers of that meeting if there's a way that the Greenfield City Council could attend that meeting. And it's not, I know it's not for about a month. And I agree, we should subpoena them. And I agree, we should hear from all interested parties. But this, I agree, there should be pickets. And who's to say there's not going to be pickets? This is, this is going to be a campaign of an escalation. It can't just stop here. I don't think it can stop here at all. I think this is the first stop in a community stepping up, and the leaders of the community saying, don't do this, you can't do this. And I think this is, this, they say it's going to take two years. Well, they said that back in February, when they, when they said they were closing the unit. So I think we're in for a long campaign and a long process of trying to convince them that this is not the right thing to do. But I think right now, as has been said, this, this is a, this is a moral argument. These are the most vulnerable citizens of our community. Some of them have come here and spoken to us tonight. I think it's on us to pass this and pass it tonight, but not stop. And we can still subpoena people. We can still get the facts. We can still attend, and we can go to pickets. But I would ask that we pass this tonight and not stop moving forward there. Councilor Mayo.
Thank you, Madam Dear. I believe that the resolution is, wouldn't be the end-all. It would be the first step. It's, I believe, some of the things that you were saying, that, that we could always subpoena people after the fact and get them in front of here and see if they can justify some of the rationale. But that, I don't want to negate the resolution. I believe in the resolution. I think that the resolution is just the first step. It's, it's, it's the first voice from this council that, on the matter, that says what our concerns are, where we stand, what we're willing to fight for. And this is something worthy of fighting for. And I say this from a perspective of over 40 years in, in human services. And that includes institutions and group homes and on the street. So I can give a very good perspective in terms of, of what kind of care is going to happen if they close institutions or, or facilities that provide vital services. And it just is detrimental, and we can't have that. These, these services, I can't express how much, or, you know, for all the years that I have been in, in, in the service, that it, it's vital to have places to go to that provide professional services. And I'm also a big fan of nurses and nurses and unions altogether. So I'll just say that upfront. I, I'm hoping that whatever institution that they, that, I'm hoping that they stay here in the service, in Franklin County and Greenfield, and that they don't cut services. They just, matter of fact, they need to add services. They just, matter of fact, they need to add services because there are just, there's an overflow many times that they need to take care of. So I believe in this resolution. I think it should pass tonight. I think it's only the first step, and I think we, and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mayo. And just a couple more points of information, just in case folks don't know. There will be a Department of Public Health meeting on the essential services, so that is another opportunity for us to attend that meeting. And there were, this week, there were two DPH hearings on the intensive care units of Bay State, Westfield, and Palmer. They are also closing, in case you didn't know that. So that's just another opportunity to throw into the bucket. Councilor Stempel.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to thank everyone. These microphones are so short, and I'm so lanky. I just wanted to take a moment to thank those who came before and spoke to us, because in a short snapshot, I was able to get a quick, important highlight of the history of mental health in America. Thanks. And I'm sure there's a lot more to learn. And this is a really, just listening to all of you speak, it's great timing, because I'm actually enrolled in a quality of service program right now. And so it was just like a case study of what I'm learning right now in my program. And I do believe that hospitals are service organizations. And when you think of quality of service, your customer is right at the center of it. A good service organization puts their customer and their customers' experience first and foremost. And so it makes me wonder what the motivation is of this service organization if they aren't hearing their customers loud and clear. So that's a concern. And then I also think, and I want to think, I'm not going to try to pronounce your last name, ma'am, but just the thought of how we moved away from centralized service and the promise was localized service. And when, prior to Bay State taking over Franklin Medical Center, that's what it was. It was our local hospital. And I like to think that Bay State still wants to call themselves our community hospital, but when they're not taking their community, who is their customer first and foremost, I think they lose the aspect of becoming a service organization. I will support this resolution tonight. And I do want to disagree with my colleague. I think it is our role to stand in front of, whether they're private businesses or public businesses, when our customers, who are you, who elect us, are telling us that this is a vital service for our community. And so I want this to be the first step, and I want us to keep this going. And I do want to hear from both sides and have that research and that information, because it could also be an opportunity for this community service organization to hear from their customers and to perhaps put their customers first. Let's look at the outputs of the lack of mental health services that we're facing daily. We know and mentioned gun violence, there's drug abuse, and then it's no secret that we have a homelessness crisis here. And it's not just our community, it's all communities everywhere. Mental health is, proper mental health, excuse me, proper mental health is a gateway to success and prevention of those three before-mentioned crises that we are having, not just here, but all across the country. I could go on and on and on and on. I am just really fired up right now, because somebody at Bay State Medical Center needs to take the course that I'm taking, and I can provide you the link, because it's an online program, because there's frameworks that can help you provide proper customer service and create a proper customer-focused organization.
Thank you, Councilor Stempel. Vice President Ricketts.
I too want to thank everyone who came out to speak, but I have to say, I do agree with my colleagues, Councilor Burson, Councilor Mass. And I know that I sit on this committee, and what we did discuss was to have Bay State come before us. And I do like the idea about having the police department and other folks in front of us as well, because this resolution will be a piece of paper they will get, and that's all. But by the applause of the very people who spoke tonight, I know they like the idea of Bay State in front of us, so that they could speak directly to them too, because that's where we wanted to get the message. I feel like the council standing behind our community, speaking to these people making a decision, is going to be a far more impact than the piece of paper that's going to go there. I don't think Mr. Farrell and Mr. Pure are on that board any longer, but if not, then it would be great to see who's on it and how we could get someone on there that will be the new voice, you know, going forward. And as much as we want to send this very quickly and get it to them, so that they will just see this piece of paper and do what they may with it, I feel like they may not listen, and we're doing the same thing, because this committee decided, this is what we wanted to do. Before we do a resolution, we wanted to have them in front of us, and we wanted to speak about our concerns, and we wanted to hear more from the public, and we were hoping that that could be a public forum, that we could make them sit through and listen to, because it is important. This community is important. And for all the reasons that we heard tonight, Holyoke's not going to be this easy-solved thing for whatever reasons. I know what happened here when just our Social Security Office moved there, and that was devastating, devastating, it still is. And I'm still talking to our state legislators about how we can bring that back here. And so this is yet another thing. So we can pass it. I'll do what the majority of the council wants, but I will be ashamed of this very council for not listening to itself when we said we wanted to have a public forum, and we wanted Bay State to listen to our residents as well as our council. I'm not in any rush to send them the piece of paper that's telling them. Greenfield said, "No, let's not do it." I want Greenfield to tell them, and know in certain terms, like, "We can't have this happen. You have to stop doing this to our community and to our people." You know, this is a very poor community. We have issues, and we will just be forgotten by them. And I know that it's going to happen. We know what happened before the detox got to this community. We know what they had to do, and the lawyers who helped lots of these folks were driving them miles and hours away to other detox centers and such. We can't have this. This is mental health. They will be on our streets collectively. And Bay State needs to hear that, because in Springfield, or wherever they may be, they're not going to care what's happening in our streets on a daily and a nightly basis. And that piece of paper is not enough to tell them what's going to happen to us. So yeah, I'm all in favor of face-to-face telling them, whether we do it with our state legislators, or more importantly, we do it with folks that are here tonight. And so I just want to let you know that when I listen and I watch shaking heads as everybody speaks, that when you all applauded, I pay attention to that, because I know you like what you heard, and that's what you wanted to do too, and you were ready to join us in this fight and go face-to-face with them. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice President. I'm going to go to Councilor Sun, because he's not yet spoken, and then anybody else who hasn't yet spoken, before anybody who's spoken. And I would also ask that if you're going to make a motion to table, just please hold off, tell everybody he's had a chance to speak.
Yes. As far as this goes, I had relatives that went up the East Oak. And if they had have gone to Holyoke, they might have not survived what they did. And so I like this resolution, but it needs to be, let's say, kicked up a little bit, so that these people at these heads of the hospitals just don't shrug things off like a lot of them do. And it's just sad that someplace in Springfield is making, deciding for us here in Greenfield, they have no idea what goes on in this town. And somebody has to wake them up and let them know there's towns around other than Springfield. That's just what I got to say.
Thank you, Councilor Sun. Councilor Ellis. Councilor Herschel, I'm sorry, sometimes I'm looking one direction without the other.
Thank you. It was a number of years ago that we did have the CEO of Bay State come and speak to the council, and it was only because their bottom line was being threatened concerning the zoning. And I was, I was one of the counselors who was on the edge of whether I was going to vote for it or against it. And I think the only time, like I said, that they really come and listen to us is because we've got something they want, and their bottom line is being threatened. Otherwise, they really don't want to hear from us. They've already made their decisions. They didn't come to us and say, "Well, we have a proposal. What do you think?" Because it affects the health of not only your community, but the whole valley here. Their only concern that their bottom line is met, they really don't want to be in mental health. It's not profitable for them. Give it to a nonprofit, I mean, to a profitable company and let them cherry-pick who they get, who they allow in, and if they don't have insurance, they don't have to come in. That's the way they're going to feel. They're not going to, they're not here to serve the health interests of the valley. I'm sorry to say that, but that's really what's at stake. If we don't fight for our hospitals, our health care, we will lose it. I'll guarantee it. I've come from, I used to live in Waltham, we lost our hospital. I used to live in Lynn, we lost our hospital. And they were actually going to lose another hospital, and people are going to have to go drive to the next town. A city of 100,000 people are losing their hospital. It's crazy. But they don't care. They really don't care. It's all about money. It's not about health care, and I don't care if you have, you're concerned about whether they're, it's profit or nonprofit, whether you're going to step on their toes, that's not important. Our health care is more important than whether we step on their toes or not. And unless we fight, we're going to lose it. Thank you.
Councilor Ellis.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with just about everything everybody's said here tonight, and I feel that we deserve to have the answers that we are looking for, and that we deserve to at least have the chance to say that we tried to get those answers prior to voting on the resolution. If they choose not to show up to talk about the reasons why they're getting rid of a service that affects, I would say, a lot more people than anyone really knows in our own community and the communities around us, that they deserve to be called out for that. And to not allow that option to hear from them is doing a disservice to the resolution, I think. So I'm in the camp of tabling to allow for the option for us to at least extend the invite to hear answers to the questions that we have, and then blast them if they don't come, because they should come. They should be here, and they should have rightfully the opportunity to tell us, and we should rightfully have the opportunity to ask those questions. Because I believe we all are on the same page on this council, that we feel it's the wrong decision that they've made. But just having that in our minds, and that's our decision, how did we get there? And I think that's a really important step to any resolution that's written. Typically, I'm not in favor of resolutions that are not within our purview. This one is very important. I believe that it's important. And that makes it all the more incumbent on us to get answers from the people who are making the decisions, or let people know that they chose not to come and give us the answers to those questions. So I would not make a motion to table right now, but I would be in favor of tabling with the stipulation that those invites go out, and that those invites are either turned down or that they are accepted, and we get a chance to ask those questions. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ellis. Councilor Wheeler.
I'll be brief, because we've been going around this, but I do want to add my voice and say that I will vote in support of this resolution, because I believe I was elected to use my position as a representative of the people to amplify your voices, and also in the hopes that this makes the news. You know, there's a word for the tactics that Bay State are using in dismantling this mental health system in the way that Counselor Burson described, and that's vulture capitalism. And I oppose it.
Councilor Dolan, I think you're the only one who hasn't spoken, and I just want everybody to have a chance to speak. I still regret not doing that with one of the library votes and letting a motion to table go too fast.
I'll be brief. I think, I'm in agreement with the rest of the counselors. This resolution seems like a no-brainer, not as a last step, but as a first step. I'll definitely vote for it.
Okay. Councilor Mass.
First, let me say, we do a disservice to ourselves by trying to vilify Bay State Franklin Medical Center. While we may disagree with this decision, even after we're informed about it, even after they have their opportunity, they are a tremendous partner with this municipality, and our fire service, our police service, our health department, in many other areas. They are a very valuable partner. The staff who work there, the, as well as the administrators, and that is, the proof is in the pudding in the many grants that are given to our local community, as well as the services that they provide, and the tens of thousands of dollars that are donated by citizens in our community towards that nonprofit. They are a valuable partner. I want to make a minor correction to what Counselor Burson said about our power to subpoena. We do not have the power to subpoena the executives of Bay State Medical Center. The Charter in Section 7-2-7C gives us the power to call upon the mayor and agents of the city for information, and D gives us the opportunity to subpoena them. But we can't subpoena anybody. We can only subpoena people who work for us. While I might like the power to call Donald Trump in before the council, I can't do that. And I think we are much more likely to get Bay State before us if they believe that we genuinely, while we have deep-seated and real concerns, that we have an open mind, and we want to hear what they have to say. I do. I want to hear what they have to say. Their solution might not be the right one, but there may be real concerns that they have that need to be addressed, that maybe we can be part of that solution. But if I were an executive at Bay State, and I thought, "Your minds were already made up," I wouldn't show up. And I hope that this council does table tonight, and that they, we send an earnest invitation, and we come back with an open mind, not with our changed values, not with changed beliefs, not with a changed agenda, but with an open mind to hear what they have to say, and to create a dialogue, not a vilification. Thank you.
One more thing before I, I think probably a motion to table is going to come up. First, I'm First, I'm open to a motion to table because I think if we can get more information and, you know, get them here, but not just hear their points of view, hear from other interested parties on this. I do think that, and I'm hearing the need for my fellow councilors to want more information, and I never want to deny that when people want more information. But one thing I do want to say, that I just want to address the comment about, you know, the jobs that are being lost and that nurses can get jobs anywhere. And nurses can't get jobs anywhere. And mental health councilors can't just get jobs anywhere. And the administrative assistants on the unit can't just get jobs anywhere. I wish it were that simple, but it isn't. So this is about our community, but this is also about our community members who work at this facility and have worked there for years and years. And this is their home. And they're losing their home as well. And so I just didn't want that point to go without a counterpoint. And I didn't want anybody in this audience to think that there are councilors who don't care about you losing your jobs because I, for one, do care about you losing your jobs. And I know many councilors who also do care about you losing your jobs. Counselor Burson?
To me, it is an issue of fundamental due process. And that is giving the people who are affected the opportunity to come before us and have their presentation. And I think whatever resolution we can, which may be amended, it may be changed or modified, at least, we've built a record. And we've also taken what they have to say, give them an opportunity to appear. And I think we are making a case for what we are trying to accomplish. What is the justification for doing it? And I just don't accept the fact that it is just a matter of money. I understand it's a matter of money. But this is a nonprofit corporation. It has received not only public funds from this community, but it has received many tax dollars going back to Hill Burton that built the place. So it is a public charitable institution to provide a service. And if they're gonna just take the position, whatever it is, the justification may be, that we have to consolidate services because this is the best model for Western Massachusetts, hear them out. But if it's just to close it down because they don't like to be in the mental health business because it's not profitable, then we should have that on the record. And I really would like as many people who are affected throughout the county to come in front of us. So I would, you know, have we formally moved the table? I don't know if we have or not. I'll move the table.
And to move, there's been a motion to table and a second that's non-debatable. And Clerk, could you call a roll call on this? Please.
Counselor Sun?
Yes, to table.
Counselor Burson?
Yes.
Counselor Alice?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
No.
Counselor Wheeler?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Herschfeld?
No.
Counselor Mas?
Yes.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel?
Fabius Fomar.
Fabius Fomar.
Tied, right?
There are 11 of us. Yeah, five to five.
It's five to five.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes.
So the motion passes?
The motion to table passes. So to be continued. Counselor Wheeler, I think we needed to read the public hearing again. Clerk, let me know. So if we could just do that, I'm sorry. I should have caught it.
Don't worry about it. This one's short. Public hearing and second reading, City Council, June 19th, 2019. Appropriate $276,530 from free cash to the following FY '20 operating budget accounts. Assessors expenses $104,000, health insurance $144,000, workers' comp $28,530.
Okay, so the public hearing is still on. Does anybody want to speak on these three financial matters? Seeing that I'm going to close the public hearing at 9:01 PM. And we're gonna go back to motions, orders, and resolutions. Mayor's veto. Counselor Alice, could you read, please?
Move that it be ordered, Chapter 161, Greenfield Patriotic Activities Committee, previously voted on by the City Council on May 15th, 2019, and vetoed by the mayor on May 28th, 2019, is hereby approved.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. I can report on this because we talked about it in chairs. And the mayor and anybody else who was at chairs, Counselor Sun, Vice President Ricketts, Counselor Stempel, you weren't there, Counselor Wheeler, somebody could fill in whatever I'm dropping. But the reason was that it was going to be a heavy lift for the town because there were so many townspeople, town workers on the committee. So does anybody want to add anything to that? Anybody who was there? I mean, that was the, when the mayor spoke to it, Counselor Sun, is that what you recall? I don't see the mayor. Counselor Wheeler, is that what you, Counselor Wheeler, what do you recall? That it was a large and unwieldy committee? I think that's what was said.
Yeah. I think the objection from the mayor, I believe, was specific to the executive branch that it would actually be an undue imposition upon the mayor's office to make these appointments, that 31 people is a considerable percentage compared to the number of appointments that are already made over the year and that he considered it an undue responsibility.
And just one other thing. On page 55, there is a reasoning. When the veto came through, the mayor did write it was an unfunded mandate and a burden on veterans' fraternal organizations. And so Counselor Mas?
It was interesting. I went and spoke to the veterans' agent immediately following, receiving this, and he was completely unaware that the mayor had vetoed it. I don't believe it's unfunded mandate. I think all of these departments are already charged with doing this work, just not sort of in this organization. This is an organizational document, not a work document. The fire department already works with parades. The police department already works with parades. The veterans' department and the rec department already work with parades. So it is not an unfunded mandate. It is work that's already being done. As far as the burden on the veterans' fraternal organizations, they are not required to serve. They're not required to appoint. They have the ability to have a seat at the table, not unlike the Domestic Violence Task Force or other executive committees where people are appointed by their position. It is large. It's intended to be large. It's intended to be large to create community engagement. It's unfortunate that the mayor vetoed it. He had previously indicated his support. I know that this was a close vote anyway, but I would ask that because the rationale doesn't make any sense, I would ask that councilors override the veto.
Counselor Alice?
Yeah, I read the rationale when this came out. And it seems to me, I don't believe, I agree that I don't believe it's an unfunded mandate. I hear from people who participate in the parades and people who participate in watching the parades that they wish that the parades were what they used to be. Now, granted, I don't think they'll ever be what they used to be. I mean, I remember the big train that used to ride in the parade and now sits up in Guilford, Vermont, in a scrapyard. But the fact of the matter is, with more people involved and actually cohesively working together, I believe that the parades would be much more attended by groups. Because they could work to create many more groups that could come in. For example, they could coordinate parades that don't fall in the same time or date as other towns who have their parades. It really is a good thing to have more people involved in this type of event. So I really hope that people will vote to keep this committee and override the veto. I just, I don't see the rationale as being a reasonable rationale as to why this committee shouldn't exist or this commission or rather, you know, multi-member board. So I hope people will vote to override this so we can at least give it a try. And if it doesn't work, it can always be rescinded at a later date. I don't believe that speaking for the other fraternal organizations that don't have anything to do with the town is really a good reason either. Because they can choose whether or not they want to be involved or not based on what they have going on in their organizations. So I hope we'll override the veto. Thank you.
Vice President Ricketts?
Okay, personally, I'm hoping the veto stands. I have been consistent with not wanting this from the beginning, so none of this is new. And then when we did have the veteran agent in front of us and he did come to the meeting, he wasn't in favor of a lot of the people that were even listed there. And we have the minutes of that, we have it on tape in the minutes, and he wasn't even all in favor of this at all. Well, at the last parade, it was Memorial Day Parade, and that department either forgot or just didn't even send out to the council or school committee like they usually do. But it was so good, many of us still attended. And I thought it was a great community turnout. So I don't feel like we really need this committee, but I think there's enough people who, if they are really committed to this and they really want to help, I think just helping Director Tim out with this would be a great step. And then bring it up and try it again next year and see if you can get this committee to pass. But I really do hope this veto stands because I was really happy with Memorial Day. And I really liked all that occurred and all the people that came out to support. And I feel like that may continue on. And now that this has been kind of talked about even during council, it would be good. Because I remember even in years past, even being part of the parade or reminding people, it used to be even discussed like at the end of council meetings and stuff. And that really hadn't happened in the last couple of years either. So I think it's fine. I'm fine with the veto.
Anyone else? Okay, so this vote requires nine votes to override the veto. We could do a roll call vote? So yes is to override the veto? So yes is that you want the committee?
Counselor Sun?
Yes.
Counselor Burson?
Yes.
Counselor Alice?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
No.
Counselor Wheeler?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Yes.
Counselor Mas?
Yes.
Vice President Ricketts?
No.
Counselor Stempel?
The motion fails. Counselor Alice? Page 56. I'm sorry, I was just gonna keep calling on you to read appointments and ordinances if you don't mind.
Sure. Whatever you would like.
Unless somebody else wants to do it.
Move that it be ordered, the Greenfield City Council hereby approves the disclosure of financial interest under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 268a, Section 20, Subsection B, by municipal employee Kurt Seaman, Fire Department Lieutenant, who seeks to provide personnel. Is it personal or personnel? Is it supposed to be personal? Okay. Personal services to a municipal agency, Franklin Regional Council of Government, identified in the attached Exhibit A, and further authorize the City Council President to sign on behalf of the City Council.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
If you wanted, was there a recommendation? I'll cede to the recommendation before I speak. I don't know what the recommendation was, if it went to committee. Did this go to committee?
Vice President Ricketts?
Yeah, I believe this was positive.
All right.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I just, since I read it, I'll take the opportunity to speak first. Lieutenant Seaman has been on the fire department for many years. He's here tonight. He spent most of the evening with us before having to actually go to work, so thank you for that. Kurt has been involved in the Signal Department at the fire department for many, many years, almost all of his career. And this particular position would be, I couldn't think of a better person to be in this position and to be able to do this. So I hope that the council will vote to allow this to move forward. It's, the disclosure is merely a paperwork thing. It's not, this should move forward, and I don't see any reason why anyone should vote against this, so thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Restained? Motion carries. Counselor Wheeler, you have a lot.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table order number FY '19-107, the sum of $80,000 be appropriated for the replacement of stair treads in the middle school. And to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is hereby authorized to borrow said sum of $80,000. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, or any other enabling statute, the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for, contract for, accept and expend any federal and/or state grants or bond premiums available for this project to be used to reduce the appropriation. And further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of these projects, which was tabled at the May 22nd, 2019 City Council Annual Budget Meeting.
Okay, it's a motion to take from the table. It's non-debatable. And so we'll do a roll call vote. Yep. And there was a second by Vice President Ricketts.
Counselor Sun?
Yes.
Counselor Burson?
Yes.
Counselor Alice?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Herschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Mas?
No.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel?
Yes.
The motion passes. Counselor Wheeler?
This received positive recommendation from Ways and Means. There are vinyl stair treads, which, in the opinion of the superintendent, are in need of replacement. The school had a number of capital requests, and this was prioritized. And it did make the cut by the mayor, as well as the Capital Improvements Committee and Ways and Means.
Counselor Mas? Counselor Mass?
I indicated at the last meeting that I'm in that school all the time, and didn't see any issues with the stairs. I revisited the school. I still don't see any issues with the stairs, because I wanted to make sure. But my primary concern is that we appropriated over $100,000. I think it was like $150,000 for the repair of lights in the auditorium at the middle school, which still has not been done. They still hasn't been done. I had a conversation, in fact, she chased me out of the middle school to make sure I knew that, with the principal, that it is scheduled for the month of June. I would ask my colleagues to indulge me by tabling this matter to a date certain, to the July meeting, so that we can ensure that that work is done before we appropriate more money to the middle school. So I'd move to table.
Let's see if I can do this with just a call. All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Could you raise your hands, please? Oh, the table motion does not pass. So we'll continue discussing. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Sun?
Whether you want to or not. Whether you want to fund it or not. No, we already voted on table.
This is to fund the $80,000 for the school stairs?
Or the treads?
The treads, yes.
No.
Counselor Burson?
Yes.
Counselor Alice?
No.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Mass?
No.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel?
Seven, yes.
Fails.
Yes.
Madam President?
You can vote, but that one was eight, and it would still fail, because it needs nine.
Okay.
Madam President?
Motion fails. Yes, Counselor Mass?
I'd move to table items four through nine.
It's a non-debatable motion, so that would be tabling items four through nine. To table the tabled motions.
Oh, actually, we haven't taken them off the, I can't do that. We, they're not off the table. I tried. I was trying to do it, I tried.
Never mind.
Where's this two-thirds versus nine? Two-thirds equals nine?
No.
Cool.
Two-thirds of the full, half of the nine.
Actually, I'm gonna call for a little break right now. We can discuss this, but I also have to, I think some of us have to go to the bathroom. It's been over two hours, so, could we just meet back here at 9:30?
9:20.
9:20.
We can just adjourn.
I'll, I'll say 9:20. It won't be 9:20, I know that. 9:30, we'll get started again. Well, hey, we're back. I'm just waiting for the town clerk. And...
Executive session's gonna take how long?
Okay, so, Counselor Wheeler?
Wait, we gotta wait for Kathy, though, because she has to record. Is her table?
It's kind of my fault.
Oh, well, that tapes on.
I think we have to have it on first.
I don't think she has audio. I can keep the roll.
Yeah, yeah, why don't we just keep moving?
We'll keep moving.
Keep this train moving.
Okay. Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table order number Who's getting stressed out? All right, all right. We'll wait, we'll wait. I'll read really slow, from the table, order number FY19-108, the sum of $90,000 be appropriated from the Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund for the following purposes and amounts.
Madam President, we've already suspended the rules of procedure. Can we go to item number 13 and continue on from there, and dispense with the items that are on the table by unanimous consent? We're, currently Counselor Wheeler is reading the next motion, which is City Hall Repairs, item number four. I'm asking if we can, because we've already suspended the rules of procedure, by unanimous consent, dispense with all the items that, prior to 13, and just not take them up. Unless any counselor wants to make that motion tonight, they would just carry over to the next meeting.
Let's, well, let's just move to item 13 right now. We'll get an answer to that, but let's just move to item 13. Counselor Wheeler, item 13, we're gonna come back to the other ones and decide what to do with them tonight. This is page 71.
Ordered that the Greenfield City Council transfer the sum of $138,000 from FY19 Operating Budget Short Term Interest to sewer short-term interest.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. This needs to be tabled, so a motion...
Nope. It's a majority vote. It's a transfer, it's a majority vote.
Clerk, Scott.
So, this was one of the items that have a first reading at Tuesday's meeting that meets, that we're considering at the special meeting next Thursday. So, there are several items in here that need to be tabled tonight, so that they can hold a second read of a public hearing and a vote next Thursday night.
Move to table.
Thank you. Is it, this is one of them, I'm sorry, I'm the one who has the notes on which ones need to be tabled. So if I say they need to be tabled, I'm only saying it because it has to be tabled, not because that's what I want to do. This needs to be tabled. A motion to table has been made. Is there a second?
Side cut.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstain? Motion to table carries. Item 14. Counselor Wheeler?
Ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate the sum of $615,000 from free cash to the General Stabilization Fund.
Is there a second? This needs to be tabled.
Second.
Okay, I, I can't make the motion to table. Could somebody else make the?
Moved.
Okay.
Second.
And second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion to table carries.
Ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate the sum of $100,000 from free cash to the OPEB Trust Fund.
Second.
Move to table.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion has been tabled. Yep.
Ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate the sum of $200,000 from free cash to the FY19 City Council Reserve Fund.
Table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate the sum of $276,530 from free cash to the following FY20 Operating Budget Accounts. Assessors' expenses, $104,000. Health insurance, $144,000. Workers' comp, $28,530.
Second.
Point of order.
We are going to vote this one.
Point of order. Madam President, this matter includes multiple line items. Is it your intent to take them up individually or together?
It was the intent to do it however Ways and Means did it. I'm not sure how Ways and Means did it.
We did it in separate, we did actually take separate motions.
Okay. Then want to do them separately, the first one? Let's start with the assessors, the 104. So let's discuss the $104,000 on the assessor's budget. Counselor Stempel?
I did write some notes as the Mayor was talking. In terms of this, for whatever reason, we do, we did defund the Health Department, and you might say that that had no impact on the, I guess we'll say what transpired after we, we did cut money from our Health Department. But I disagree. We, we can look at what happened, and I'm sure if we followed the money even more, we could see that it did create something of a situation for that department. And so I'm curious, would anyone sitting behind this table, how do you believe that defunding an already fragile process and department is a good idea? We need to close the budget in time. We need to get our revenue in. We won't be able to close the books if we decide to do it this way. This is a bad way to run business. If we're going to switch our process, then let's have a plan before we just rip the money from the department. So if that's something we want to look at, I'm happy to do the research with counselors and see what we should do moving forward. But let's not do this right now without a backup plan. Otherwise, we're just gonna be behind the eight ball, and I don't think the citizens of Greenfield deserve that. I don't want to see additional cost, what we saw happen previously in terms of closing books. It was expensive for us in that process. And so, if that's what we want to do, to relook at this and see what's better to do, then let's do it, but just not in this hasty way. That's my two cents.
Counselor Sun?
Yes, I've been doing some homework on this, as far as the assessors. Go around talking to people about it. And as far as funding, several people have said it's, they just, if we funded it this, for the rest of this year, to go ahead and do it. But that we should go out and try to find somebody that, in town, somebody around the town, to come in with the other, and hire them. You know, somebody that knows it, about assessors and stuff like that. And that's, you know, their recommendation, to try to get somebody local to work in as an assessor. So it'd come in as a local person instead of somebody from Boston or someplace like
Counselor, Vice President Ricketts? Or Counselor Mass, I'm not sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, if you were first, I did...
I can't tell who was first.
Doesn't matter to me.
I just want to say that I'm going to fully support this. I was just out of the hospital, homesick, watching this on TV at the time, and I was just cheering when Counselor Dolan was saying, "What are we doing? We don't have anything in place yet. How are we cutting this without knowing what the next step is?" And I know that once this went through, and headlines happened, people were just like, "What is going on?" You had the Health Department in, you've had the Building Department, and now the assessors. Why are there all these headlines going on? What, what is going on? And I just know that we just recently had this TIF meeting, and we're trying to figure out what planning's going on. And we talked about the assessor's piece a lot, and all that they bring to the table. We also bring up that, you know, they're the ones helping us for the tax rate. And because of the experience of these folks working in other towns, the information that they bring to us, to help us with our community, because they have the knowledge of what, when other communities did not listen, is invaluable. So, let's just fund this and move on. I hope it doesn't get tabled or voted down. We do, we really owe it to Greenfield to pass this.
Counselor Mass?
Question has been raised repeatedly, what is the plan? Plan is very clear. The plan is, the Mayor sends us an appropriation for a full-time assessor for at least half a year, so that six months from now, one can be hired. And we vote the money for RRG, for the contractor. This is, we do not, you can do all the planning and thinking you want, but the council does not have the power to send, to add to a department. We have to get the appropriation from the Mayor. On the old 27-member council that I served on, you could add into a department. You could say, "I want to put an extra, you know, $50,000 in the Police Department." And it didn't happen a lot, but it happened. You could add to departments. We cannot do that. The only, the only thing we can do, if we want to put in place a plan for transition, is to use the leverage of an appropriation that the Mayor wants, not only wants, but needs, in order to get him to send us what we want. It takes 48 hours for the Mayor to call a special meeting. He can go in tomorrow, and in two days, there can be a special meeting where he sends us an appropriation for a salary and wages and RRG. And we can vote them both. That would be a compromise. If we vote this, it is rolling over. And that might be okay. We, we will survive. The town won't go, won't fall apart if we do this. But we will not do what I think most, many of us believe is the best policy from Greenfield, which is having a local assessor. The, I, I want to dispel the misbelief that RRG is something special, and having a consultant with all of these specialties is so helpful, the town can't be done in any other way. We've always had consultants in the assessor's office. We always had consultants as add-on for special projects. What we haven't had is no on-the-board, full-time assessor. We have pri, completely privatized this department. And that's what this council wants to continue to be, the policy, that's fine. But I, I would hope, we have three powers. The power to pass a resolution, we talked extensively about that power tonight. The power to pass an ordinance, there's no ordinance that will solve the, that would require an assessor to be on, on the books. And the power of the purse. This is, this is what you do, is you hold out something he wants to get something you want. It's the only way to get a Mayor who disagrees with you to give you what you want. I hope that we table or vote down the 104,000.
Counselor Dolan and Counselor Alice?
Last year's debacle with the Health Department is also on my mind as we go into this vote. I know I spoke to some folks from that department, or folks who were departing from that department shortly afterwards, and those people expressed to me that the financial hit was only part of it. The other part of it was not feeling like the town respected and valued them. And that is what I have in mind when, right now, when I'm supporting this money for the assessor's office. We have the Chair of our Board of Assessors here, telling us that this is the right move. We have, the Chief Assessor has come multiple times to multiple meetings to explain in detail why this is important, and how the business of assessing has actually changed, from driving around, visiting people's houses, to something that's much more high-tech and oriented towards statistics, and much more specialized. And she has expressed again and again that this, this current system is a system that works. She is an expert on assessing. I don't think that anyone in this council is. So I think it's, it's, we're overstepping our authority. We are not hiring authorities in this town. We're not experts at management. We don't necessarily understand how the things go together. I think this would be a major, major overreach and a potential debacle if we were to not fund this.
Counselor Alice?
Yeah, so I, I believe we made the right policy decision when we made our vote. When that vote was taken, I went the very next day and met for almost two hours with our Chief Assessor, to talk about what had taken place. In that conversation, she said, "Well..." In that conversation, she said, "Well, in my memo, I said X, Y, and Z." And I said, "What memo?" Well, there was a Ways and Means meeting that had been moved, which is why I could not be there, where the memo was presented to the Ways and Means Committee. And that memo, for whatever reason, was never emailed and was never put into our council drive, so I never saw it. So I was working under the information that I did have when I made that decision. Now, I believe the policy decision is the right policy decision. However, I believe that there is a way and a compromise that could be made to make what needs to happen, happen. And we received an email from the Board of Assessors, signed by all three of them, that suggested a six-month period for RRG would be sufficient, which would be $50,700. But with that needs to be an appropriation for a full-time staff member to be filled at the end of that transition period. I believe with the new information that came, that I received from our assessor that day, that, and with that letter that I received from the Board, all three Board of Assessors, who all three signed it, that if that's what will work to achieve the goal that the council wishes to have, which is in-house service, and to achieve the goal that the assessors need, which is six months to transition to that, I think that's what we should be doing, because that's what is being, that's what was in the email being asked for, and now the mayor's coming for $104,000, which is not what the, all three Board of Assessors put their signature to for the six months. So after the debate has ceased on the full motion, I'm going to make a motion that we amend this to $50,700 to provide the funding for the six-month period, and suggest that the mayor bring back to us the rest of the money for salary and wages to be able to hire what we were looking to do when we took the vote. So I will make that motion, or that amendment, when the time comes.
Is there any other? Counselor Wheeler?
I did forget to mention at the jump that this did receive a positive recommendation from Ways and Means, three positive and one negative. Kimberly's been before us, she did, and I do regret if that information did not get to you, Counselor Ellis, but she did testify before us at that meeting, which was recorded and televised. And she has also been to committee chairs and testified again tonight at Ways and Means. So she has spoken publicly at least three times in favor of funding her department. I'm not necessarily opposed to replacing RRG with an assessor, but I am opposed to the way that we seem to be trying to go about it, which is by unfunding, by overreaching, as Counselor Dolan said, and unfunding to this department, using the power of the purse in a way that I don't think it is meant to. I think it results in a dysfunctional public process. The fact is, the mayor has the authority to staff this department in such a way, and we're attempting to undermine that authority. And I would personally think that the energy would be more positively used to lobby mayoral candidates to support a fully-staffed, as opposed to outsourced, assessor department. But speaking for the item before us, it's clear to me that we have to fund this, that this $104,000, that the department would not be, will not function properly without it, that we will have a return to the health department debacle of last year. And it will result in a crisis of confidence that will affect the city's ability to hire and the department's ability to function going forward.
Counselor Mass, and then Counselor Stumpel.
Let me be clear. The mayor does not have the authority to staff this department as he sees fit. He has the authority to staff it as we appropriate. We have the choice of appropriating full-time salary and wages. We have the choice of appropriating part-time salary and wages. We have the authority to vote contracted services. And if we deny his recommendation, he does not get to do it the way he wants to. And we have a mayor who does not like to work friendly with the council, doesn't go along with things. I don't know, maybe someone else has a different experience than I do, but I don't think any member of this council has got the mayor to put a single line in the budget that he wasn't originally for himself. The only way to do it is to force him by holding back something he absolutely needs. And I agree, we absolutely do need this. But what I heard tonight at Ways and Means was to set the tax rate, which was the critical thing, less than half of the contract was necessary. And so I would be willing tonight, so as not to delay the transfer, so as to allow the conversation to continue, to vote the $52,000, which is half of this budget, to allow that to go through, to be renegotiated. I would even vote the remainder, the second $52,000, if I got appropriation for full-time salary and wages later in the year. There's no, the only rush on this, the only rush, is closing out the books. Mind you, there's $30,000 sitting there for RRG right now that we already appropriated that is unspent. So 52 plus the 30 for the commercial revow, which has been completely untouched, because the mayor refuses to take action, because we didn't give him what he wanted, is $82,000. That is 80% of what's required. I don't think the assessor's department is going to fall apart with a 20% reduction in contracted services. I think it sends the message that we are serious about having, not privatizing services and having a full-time assessor. And so at this time, I'd move to amend to 52, from $104,000 to $52,000.
Is there a second? Is there a second on the amendment to bring it down to 52?
I'll get a second. The figure is actually $50,700.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment, if that's necessary.
Then I'll second that.
Okay, so now we're talking about $50,700. So we're speaking to the amendment to the main motion, which is $104,000 to the assessor. Counselor Stumpel, did you still? Counselor Ellis?
So the reason that it's $50,700 is because the actual contract we have with RRG is only for $101,400 this year. So the $104,000 is what's needed for next year under the contract. So it was already inflated by $2,600 for this year. So that's why the half of what's actually necessary is $50,700. And that's why I came up with that number.
Any other discussion on the amendment to the motion? Counselor Ellis, and then Counselor Stumpel.
Actually, I do have a little bit more. So I was unable to be at Ways and Means tonight. I had a family obligation. But am I, is the situation that the letter that we received from the assessors two weeks ago is no longer what they actually want? Is that what was said at Ways and Means tonight? Can I, so that letter was sent to us, and it's no longer what they're looking for? I just want to be clear, because the letter is very clear that six months would be okay. And it's signed by all three. So if that's changed, I'd love to know.
Where do we hear from the horse's mouth?
Board of Assessors coming tonight, asking for the full $104,000 to hire RRG, to not only close the books, but to continue our work of assessing the whole town, as well as the commercial district.
Counselor Ellis?
I'm going to direct my question to you. I just am curious what the reasoning for the letter was that was signed by all three, and then the change tonight. I'm just...
You could answer?
Yeah, I can answer. I think we were in desperate times when this cut first happened. I was shocked that this council would cut a department $100,000. So we were at desperate times and thought maybe half would be a way to get us through. That's no way to run a department. It's no way to get us through six months and then come back here in six months. Is that what the council suggests we do? What we're trying to do is some consistency. We want to have a plan moving forward. We don't want to come back here every six months and ask for another gap in budgeting.
Counselor Mass?
Just want to be clear for my colleagues. I don't want the assessor's office to have to come back in six months. I want them to come back in two weeks with an appropriation for everything they need for RRG and, and a full-time assessor. We were very clear when we voted this. And frankly, this was one of the votes that gave us more money for the schools. And I may, speaking for myself, not for anyone else, I said I was willing to do this, knowing that it was not a cost savings, knowing that we would need to spend more money, but because of the policy piece. And I really do not think most members of this council disagree with the policy of having a full-time salaried assessor in that office. I think people don't like the hardball politics of it and forcing the mayor's hand. And I'm sympathetic to that. If I thought there was any other way to make this happen, I would. But the idea of waiting until we have a new mayor is, I think, relatively, that puts this out a whole nother year, at least, at least a whole nother year. Because new mayor's going to come in, they're coming into the end of the budget cycle, the middle of the budget cycle, they're going to be preparing the following year's budget, right? They're not going to be able to come for an appropriation then, and the earliest that they would be able to hire is later on. They're not going to know whether or not they have, if they're going to get approval from the council for that additional position. So they're not going to be able to hire it until after it's approved. It could take, you know, three to six months to hire an assessor. So if we don't have an appropriation in place, a new mayor, even if they want to, can't start the work. You're looking at pushing this out 15 to 18 months for hiring a full-time assessor, something that could be happening. A mayoral candidate could be looking for someone while they're campaigning, or it could take them three to six months after they're elected. And they would know they had a commitment for it in the budget from this council.
I'm tired of the bullying. I'm tired of the power moves. I'm tired of whatever we're calling these politics today. I'm tired of hypotheticals. I'm tired of randomly making cuts because of those hypotheticals. Can't we just run a town and have what we need and what our citizens need done, not based on people's opinions? Or, again, the hypotheticals piss me off. I'm so friggin' sick of hypotheticals that I might leave this meeting. I'm just so sick of it. I'm just so sick of like, I'm just, I'm very frustrated. And so for me, it's like, I don't, I keep hearing people talking about what we as a body want. I don't want what you want. I want what we have, because it's working and it's effective. I've had the pleasure of working alongside this assessor's firm, serving on our TIF committee for the past, I don't know, two or three months. And it's great. It was a great meeting, and I was able to use his expertise in order to negotiate the STA with the Liberty 401 property. It was a great experience. I learned a lot, and it was an objective. And they do their homework. They do a great job. So if I could be, if somebody could come to this table with proof that whatever we're going to get after this is actually better than what we have, give it. These hypotheticals about what I want, and people telling me what I want, and what you think I want is better for this community, I'm sick of it. Don't put words in my mouth. Let's not make cuts based on hypotheticals. I appreciate that there's some numbers behind it, whether or not they're wanted anymore, but can we please make decisions based on the information we have in front of us? Please. I'm sorry, I'm frustrated, because this has been three to four years of hypotheticals, and I'm over it. We need to make a decision. I'm calling the question.
Did you, I'm sorry, Joe, you're done. So the question has been called, and there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the question being called right now is for the $50,700. $57,000. $50,700, yes. I said it right the first time. Roll call. Counselor Sun?
Come back.
Counselor Burson?
No.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
No.
Counselor Wheeler?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
No.
Counselor Mass?
Yes.
Vice President Ricketts?
No.
Counselor Stumpel?
Absolutely not.
Counselor Sun?
Yes.
No, it doesn't pass. The amendment fails. So why don't we just vote on the main motion? Counselor Ellis?
I would like to make another amendment. And that amendment would be to reduce it by $2,600 to $101,400, which is what the contract with RRG requires for this year's payment.
Okay, any discussion? Counselor Wheeler?
I don't have my budget book in front of me. Does that remove all expenses from the assessor's office?
Counselor Ellis?
The motion, as I read it, is for the RRG portion of the contract, of the contract. And in the contract with RRG, it states that it's $101,400.
Counselor Mass?
I think Counselor Wheeler is correct that there may have been other expenses, other than just the contract. There may have been contracted expenses for copy machines, things like that. So I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, so now the motion's been made in second for $101,400. Okay, so there's no second. Is there a second to the new amendment, because Counselor Mass withdrew his second, to the $101,400? Crickets? Okay.
Yes.
Oh, crickets, not crickets.
No. It's that time of night. Yeah. So we're back to $104,000. So ready to vote on 104?
Yes.
And so a roll call, please, Clerk Scott. Counselor Sun?
Yes.
Counselor Burson?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Mass? Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Stumpel?
Yes.
Motion passes. Health insurance, $144,000.
Don't do that again.
Is there any discussion?
Point of vote. Madam President, for the next two items, I'm going to recuse myself from the rail for conflict of interest.
Okay, Counselor Burson? What's going on?
Nothing, just a little commentary.
Let's move to health. Let's move to health insurance. I thought I was missing something. $144,000 on the health insurance. And so, we're cutting these up one at a time, three motions?
Point of order. So, these next two items, positive recommendation from Ways and Means, correct?
Yes, these received positive recommendations with one abstention.
Okay, thank you so much.
So, Counselor Mass has abstained, is recusing himself, I should say. So, is there any discussion on the health insurance? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Workers' comp, $28,530. And it was a positive unanimous recommendation, except for one recusal. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Counsel Wheeler. This is a tabled one.
Ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate the sum of $141,897 from GSET retained earnings to the FY19 GSET operating budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
It needs to be tabled.
Motion table.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? It's tabled. Counsel Wheeler.
Ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate the sum of $132,000 from sewer retained earnings to the FY19 sewer operating budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
It needs to be tabled?
Tabled.
Second? 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 Okay. Oh, thank you. Motion to table, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Opposed? Abstain?
These are the ones that have to be tabled, right?
Yes, these are the ones that have to be tabled. So, executive session?
Madam President, I move to approve all of the mayor's appointments as written in the packet.
Yeah, second, third.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Every single appointment has passed. Page 83, Vice President Ricketts. And then, I know that Counselor Mayo is going to make some friendly amendments.
Okay. So, 83?
Yep. I crown you.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves the attached resolution, support of the LGBTQIA Pride and Civil Rights Month. I, Penny Ricketts, hereby issue this resolution in support of LGBTQIA Pride and Civil Rights Month in the month of June in the year of 2019, and for displaying the pride flag again on the government property. At a time when the nation is trying to roll back protections from discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity, we need to step up and lead the way forward. I believe that everyone deserves opportunity to love who they love, find and keep a job in a safe environment, and enjoy the same everyday freedoms that every American, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity and expression. I also believe that all members of our community, especially our youth, deserve to feel and be safe from violence, harassment, and exploitation of any nature. I believe this resolution will show our residents and neighbors that the city of Greenfield is a leader in embracing diversity, and is tolerant and inclusive for all people who live and work in our community.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Counselor Mayo, you like to make some friendly amendments?
I would like to strike, on the first paragraph, I'd like to strike the word "I" and include "we," the Greenfield City Council.
Use a microphone. Use a microphone, please. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, on the first paragraph, where it says "I," I'd like to put "we," the Greenfield City Council. The next change is, one, two, three. In the third paragraph, strike the word "I" as it begins, and put in "we." And the next paragraph, same thing, strike "I," put in "we." And the last paragraph is, strike "I" and put in "we." And the last change is, in the last, in the last, in the last sentence is, where it says the city of, of Greenfield, after "city," we want to put "council." Those are the changes.
Do you, do you accept those friendly amendments? Vice President Ricketts?
Oh, yeah, I accepted them. For the record, this is not me. I did not write this, I, I just reading it. This came forward from a resident of Greenfield, or used to be Greenfield, Sarah Ahern. So, when I read it with my name in it, it was just because, you know, that's just how I read right now. So, friendly amendment away. This is not my document, but thank you.
Is there any discussion? Counselor Mass.
I'd also like to offer a friendly amendment. I don't know if Counselor Ricketts, on behalf of the mover, would, would accept this, or if, I'm happy if anyone objects to, to have it as a moved amendment. In the second paragraph, I'd like to strike the words "the nation is" and replace with "some individuals in the nation are." I, I don't think our nation is acting in that way. I think just individuals are.
Thank, yes, I accept that friendly amendment.
Thank you.
Counselor Stempel.
One more friendly amendment. I'd like to add to paragraph three, where it says, "I believe that everyone," or I guess now it's "we believe that everyone deserves the opportunity to love who they love." I would like to add, "get an education and find and keep a job in a safe environment."
Do you accept that, Vice President?
Yes, I accept that friendly amendment.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay, so, we have some, we have some financials that we had skipped over, and at this point, we could go into, we could vote to go into executive session. I know the Wiley-Russell Dam folks are here.
Yeah.
And you've been waiting a long time. So, I would, I would like to, no matter what, just get back to item 10, so you don't have to wait till our executive session is over. So, Counsel Wheeler, page 68.
That the Greenfield City Council take from the table order number FY19-121, the sum of $120,000 be appropriated for the repair design for the Wiley-Russell Dam. To meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is hereby authorized to borrow said sum of $120,000 pursuant to MGL Chapter 44 or any other enabling statute. And the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for, contract for, accept and expend any federal and/or state grants or bond premiums available for this project to be used to reduce the appropriation and further. The mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of these projects, which was tabled at the May 22, 2019 City Council Annual Budget Meeting.
Second?
Okay, so, the motion's been made to take this from the table. And so, there, this is a non-debatable motion, so we'll start the roll.
No.
It's not debatable.
He's taking this from the table. What's he doing?
This is the vote to take it from the table.
Counselor Burson.
Yes.
Counselor Alice.
Yes.
Counselor Dolan.
No.
Counselor Wheeler.
No.
Counselor Mayo.
No.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
No.
Counselor Mass.
Yes.
Vice President Ricketts. Counselor Stempel.
You'd like to change your vote?
Yes.
To a yes?
Yes.
It stays on the table. To be continued. So, I would recommend at this time that somebody make a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion out of executive session?
Yes, yes. And we will come out of executive session, and we will finish up the night, but we do have our attorney waiting for us, and it seems the prudent thing to do at this point. So...
Do the first reading and motion to adjourn when we come back into executive session in courtesy of...
Oh, okay.
I don't understand.
Perfect. Okay, now I understand. I didn't... Because I listened to it, it was...
Okay, is there a motion to go into executive session?
I move that we go into executive session for purpose number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
Second.
Okay, this has to be a roll call vote, so could everybody, please, have, have your seats.
Counselor Sun.
Yes.
Counselor Burson.
Yes.
Counselor Alice.
Yes.
Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Mass.
Yes.
President Renault.
Yes.
Vice President Ricketts.
Yes.
Counselor Stempel.
We're going to come back to regular session after we come out of executive session, for anybody who wants to stay tuned. Good evening, I believe we're back.
We are back.
We are back in regular session at 11:02. We have a couple more financial matters to get through. And Counsel Wheeler.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we take from the table items five, six, seven, eight, nine, 11, and 12.
Second. Second.
Okay, so, we're going to vote on them all together, because there's been a motion, and it's been seconded to take from the table all of these items. So, if you vote no, then none of them get taken from the table. And if you vote yes, then they all get taken from the table. So, Counselor Mass is not here. That's okay. We have a quorum. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could you raise your hands, please? Taking these financial orders from the table. One, two, three, four, five, six. I'm a no.
Point of information. How can we take them all at the same time? Because it has to be one at a time, does it not? Because we have to, once they're taken from the table, they would all be on the floor, and we could not vote them all on the floor at the same time.
We can't do that. Okay.
If a motion is made, and it's not seconded, then the motion cannot be taken from the table.
So, Counsel Wheeler, want to do them one by one? So, if the motion is made and it's not seconded, can't be taken from the table.
Wait, what's number first? What page is this on?
You can second it, and then you can vote to not take it from the table, too. We're starting with item number five.
Page 63 is item number five.
Yes, Counselor Mass.
I move to adjourn.
Do it later, right?
Second.
Oh.
Oh, there's a first reading, or something.
You haven't done that yet? I withdraw my motion.
Let's just get through these things that are on the agenda. It's not going to take long. Let's just get through them, and we'll motion to adjourn, and we'll be done, and we'll go through a first reading. Counsel Wheeler.
Page 63.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table order FY19-142, the sum of $100,000 be appropriated for sewer main replacement and repairs, and to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is hereby authorized to borrow said sum of $100,000 pursuant to MGL Chapter 44 or any other enabling statute. And the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for, contract for, accept and expend any federal and/or state grants or bond premiums available for this project to use to reduce the appropriation and further. The mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of these projects, which was tabled at the F, the May 22, 2019 City Council Annual Budget Meeting.
Is there a... Okay, so, it is off the table.
No, you have to vote to take it off the table.
Now, the vote, the vote is there. Do we still have a quorum? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. These financial orders, listen, we don't have enough votes to pass them. So, if you vote to take them off the table...
How do you know?
Because I already know. I mean, there, we barely...
I changed my mind from the last meeting.
I believe we don't, we, we have, how many people here? If you want to take the chance and vote on these, then vote to take them off the table. Stop complaining about how long this meeting is taking, because you all are doing the talking, too. If you want to make a motion to adjourn, then do it. This motion is off the table. It's motion number five. Let's discuss it.
Move to call the question.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
All in favor? No.
Can we have a raise of hands, please? Show of hands to call the question.
Well, I think the question passed.
Oh, question passed?
Yeah.
So...
It fails.
What are we voting on?
It's item number five, page 50.
I understand that, but we are, we're voting to, to take it off the table, or...
No, so, we voted to take it off the table. Taking it off the table passed. So, all these items were taking off the table, if you vote to take it off the table. And then, we are voting on the main motion, which is the monetary motion. This got, the question got called, and we voted affirmatively to let the question get called. And so, then, we voted on the money, and the motion just failed. And that was for sewer, and I have a hard time with this word, sewer, main, replace and repairs on page 63.
Madam President.
Let's do it again, but people, listen, pay attention. Unless you want to make, if you want to make a motion to adjourn, let's do that, because, because it's getting confusing, because people are talking and not listening. So, we're going to start this again. No, no hands up, just, just, who's going to take over for Ways and Means? Counselor Alice, will you please read the motions? Start with, start with five.
Can we just do five?
Page 63.
Point, point of order, Madam President, we just voted and defeated item number five.
I was told by other counselors here, they didn't know what they were voting on, that they were voting to call the question.
Okay, then, the question's been called, and we need to vote the, the, the measure. If the measure's still on the table...
Exactly. The yes, the yes we just did was to call the question.
Who wants to run the meeting? Because this, this is extremely confused. Can somebody make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Put your hands up if you're in favor.
Three yes.
Three. All right. Motion to adjourn fails. So, we're going to sit here, the question, so, we're starting this question from, from the start again, because I have people telling me they, they didn't vote to call the question, or they did vote to call the question, or they didn't vote to take it off the table. So, your first voting to take it off the table. Then, your second vote is, if somebody called, takes the vote to call the question, then you're call, you're voting on that. you're calling, you're voting on that.
Point of parliamentary inquiry.
Counselor Mass, you want to run the meeting? Because I would easily give up the chair, because I, I'm losing control of this meeting, and I, I don't have the patience for it much longer.
President Reno, any member has a right to challenge the president as to the parliamentary procedure, and it's up to the body as a whole to rule on whether or not the president is correct or not under our rules of procedure and Robert's Rules of Order. So, a point of order to challenge your ruling would be correct, and then you'd have to put it to the body as a whole. But I believe our clerk has taken a role of the measure being taken off the table, and the measure being called. I don't know if she's taken a vote, a roll call as to the vote. We can vote, whatever the last recorded measure of the clerk should be where we're at.
I'm trying to make this easy, and give, I don't think this is a big, it's not a big, it's not going to change anything. I'm trying to make it easy by just saying we redo the vote. I understand your need to stick to procedure, and that's why I'm offering, if you want to run this meeting right now, I will easily give up this chair, and you can run the meeting.
I'd be happy to run the meeting.
You're running the meeting.
Madam Clerk, what is the last vote of the council?
To call the question.
And what was the results of that, that motion?
It was a positive recommendation, by majority.
Is, will you call the roll on that, on the question?
Do you want to sit here?
For clarification. I'm calling the roll call, to call the question or for the motion?
For the motion.
Thank you.
Counselor Sun.
Yes.
Counselor Burson.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Abstain.
Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler. Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Mass.
No.
Vice President Ricketts.
Yes.
Counselor Stempel.
Yes.
Counselor Dolan.
I would like to make a motion that because of the rules of procedure suspended, we go immediately to the first reading.
Without objection? Seeing none. Counselor Dolan, you read the first reading, please.
City Council First Reading, June 19, 2019, required $460,000 to replace Greenfield School System. Greenfield School. The first reading will plead as was required.
Yes.
Is there, is there a motion to adjourn at this time? Counselor Dolan, I see your motion to adjourn, is there a second? Second by Counselor Stempel, all in favor?
Aye.
All abstaining? Motion passes.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield, call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant, on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield, visit them online at newfortunemay.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield, you can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power, one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave, call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.